All right. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Vanessa Varner, Emergency Management Director. I'm here today. I know it says Emergency Management Update. However, I submitted the Roscommon County Emergency Operations Plan, July 2025 update. Our Emergency Operations Plan has been in need of an update for about a year and a half. We were waiting on the state to get their template updated because they have very strict expectations and requirements for what it is that they want to see in a county's emergency operations plan. Sorry, I just took a run across the parking lot.
Deep breath.
To go and try to find a board. So, give me a minute. All right. So, an emergency operations plan, for those of you that haven't been through this process before, is an all-hazards framework for how we, as a county, say that we're going to manage an emergency or disaster that comes our way. Okay? It's really our game plan. So, this is our update for July. Our last update was done February of 2019. Here's a table of contents of everything that we're going to cover. The information that I've provided to you is the base plan. That's the public information. Okay? There are many annexes, and you'll see when you look at the plan that I provided to you. There's annexes A through K. There's also appendixes I through, or 1 through 6, that are all non-public, and that's because they contain information that is strategic and tactical in nature, that contain protected critical infrastructure information, that contain information that, if released to the public, could be potentially detrimental to the community as a whole. So, it's not recommended that it be released. So, the purpose and scope of this plan is to provide unified all-hazard emergency management framework. Okay? It's required if we, as a county, want to receive any sort of state and federal disaster assistance. If we don't have a current approved plan, we don't qualify. During the ice storms, there were counties that didn't have current approved plans. They were scrambling to get a base plan approved. Okay? They were signing them in the middle-of-the-night sort of situations, throwing together meetings, making it happen, so that they could qualify for that state and federal assistance. This plan is what supports coordinated response to protect the lives of our property, lives and property. This is what gives the county the legal authority to be able to have such a plan. We have Michigan's Public Act 390 that was adopted in 1976. There are amendments. Any of you would like to read it? It's solid. It's also what gives you the authority to have me act on behalf of Chairman Censor. The Publication 201A is the guidance that the state provides for creating an emergency operations plan. Then there's Homeland Security Presidential Directive 5. Currently, that is up for review. That's one of the FEMA directives that President Trump requested be reviewed. It's currently in place as it stands. There's not been any amendments, but that's where it is. NIMS, anybody that's familiar with first responders, everybody's required to participate with NIMS. That's the National Incident Management System. That's what gives everybody that common language. Okay? To try to have everybody on the same playing field, so that we're all speaking the same language and working together at the same page. The National Response Framework is what gives us that general foundation to work together. And CPG 101 is that federal guidance for how to create an emergency operations plan. Incident Management and Plan Activation. So, the plan is activated upon recommendation from Emergency Management and a local emergency declaration by the Board Chair. Okay? You guys would meet, or the Board Chair can say, "We need to issue a local declaration." Okay? And I can recommend that, or you, as the Board Chair, can say, "This is what we need to do." When the plan is activated, this allows resource mobilization. Okay? This is saying, "As a county, we have all these resources. These all need to be used. We maybe need to bring in other resources." Okay? We are in this state of emergency. The plan deactivates automatically after seven days, unless you guys meet and decide that it needs to be extended. Or if the governor issues a state of emergency, a state declaration, that's in place for 28 days. Okay? That supersedes our local declaration. But again, that would be a state of emergency. It can also be deactivated when normal operations resume. So, say, whatever happens, a tornado comes through, or we have a wildfire that causes that local declaration to be issued. Once, if it takes 72 hours for us to get back to normal operations, then you can say, "All right, we're done." And that declaration's over. Community Lifelines. These are what gauge our need for response and how we allocate our resources. So, there's eight community lifelines. Typically, they're in this chart, this bar chart. I put them in a circle because I feel like there's not one that takes priority over the other, that they're all just as important. If we're having issues with transportation with our residents in our community, then that's a problem. If we're having issues with food, hydration, and shelter, that's a problem. And a disaster can cause issues with all of these things, and we have to decide what is most important to get taken care of, and prioritize those, and allocate resources accordingly. And so, when a disaster incident's occurring, I have a chart in the EOC, and I say, "All right, what are our needs? What are the problems?" And then, "What needs to be taken care of?" And then, we fill that in, and that's how we set our goals and objectives for what needs to be taken care of. So, these are those items for prioritizing and for getting our incident stabilized. Hazards and Risks. So, the reason we have an emergency operations plan is because of hazards and risks that we, as a community, may experience. These are some of the identified hazards and risks that our community has experienced in the past, or has been deemed prone to experience. Under terrorist threats, that's cyber incidents, listed as the primary. We have two counties in our region that have publicly acknowledged having experienced cyber threats or cyber incidents. So, I think that's something that we need to keep at the forefront of our minds, that it could happen to us, and we need to be vigilant. But wildfires, floods, severe weather, obviously, is always an issue. Transportation incidents, power outages. I think we've all been experiencing power outages. Potentials for dam failure and hazmat incidents. We have a lot of materials that are transported through our county on a daily basis. Okay? While we do have locations within the county that have hazmat materials, the amount of materials that are transported through our county with having I-75, 127, M-55, those primary transport corridors, it's crazy. So, just knowing that and being aware of that and having those in consideration. Also, considerations that we have to keep in mind are vulnerable populations, our seasonal population changes, and the high-risk events that we have, like festivals and holidays, like our holiday weekends. So, the roles and responsibilities with this plan are policy guidance for the Board of Commissioners, declarations, and public communication. Emergency Management's role is coordination, resource management, and training. Our agencies that are involved with this plan are maintaining standard operating procedures and supporting the emergency operations plan implementation. So, those annexes and appendices that I talked about, there are specific agencies that are listed as primary and supporting organizations with those, and they all sign in as saying that they agree to support this plan and that they will play their part. So, they don't just... They're not just listed and not informed. They play a part. They train, and we educate and work with them. Coordination and Communication. We have regular interagency meetings. We also have bimonthly LPT meetings and quarterly LEPC meetings. Those are our meetings with Emergency Management and our local stakeholders. I also have countless other meetings that any local agency can tell you. They get lots of notifications from me to meet, so that we can do additional pre-planning. Incident Coordination. At the time of an incident, it's Emergency Management's responsibility to activate the EOC if necessary, and to assist in coordinating with our Public Information Officer, Joint Information Center, to make sure that the message that goes out is appropriate and coordinated. Communications. We communicate with the state using MySims, which is a web-based EOC platform. We also are utilizing our Genesis Alert system and the media to communicate with the community. Access and Functional Needs Individuals are a huge part of this plan, and making sure that we integrate them into all phases of the emergency management process, and that we make sure that we have ADA-compliant shelters, and that our messaging is tailored to make sure that we're communicating to all individuals. Resource and Logistics Management is a huge part of our emergency operations plan, because if we don't know what we have available in the community and what our local resources are, how do we request resources outside the area? So, a huge part of what we do within our plan, and making sure that Emergency Management is doing their part, is following through and communicating with our local businesses, communicating with our local agencies, and knowing what resources that they have available. Also, making sure that we have mutual aid agreements, and that we know what we have available through MEMAC, which is the Michigan Emergency Management Assistance Compact. Finance and Documentation. So, most of you may have heard that there was $50 million allocated with the ice storm and public assistance funding. The only way to be eligible for that public assistance funding is to have properly tracked your expenditures. So, part of what is written in the plan is what our processes and procedures are for how we track our expenses, making sure that all the documentation is in order. So, working with our Treasurer's Office, working with Jody's Office, and making sure that, as a county, we're tracking things properly, and also making sure that we're training all of the agencies that could be potentially working with us and submitting for reimbursement through the county, to understand what it is that they need to do, because documentation is huge. And Commissioner Russo, you've experienced this, working with Mavis, that you have to have everything in order to get reimbursed. Yes? Another part of finance and documentation is damage assessment. So, through the ice storm, they had to complete damage assessment, and that's taking photos in a proper manner. That's making sure that things are documented properly, because what we might, as an untrained individual, what you might consider as severely damaged home, under FEMA's eyes, is not a major damage. It's a minor damage, or it could be considered no damage. So, knowing what the thresholds are and how to classify those properly is huge, because if you say that you have all of this damage, and then they come in and they're like, "No, there's nothing here," that's a problem. Or if you underrate what the damage is, and then, you know, you're doing a disservice to your citizens. So, knowing and having the proper training for that finance and documentation part. Then Maintenance. This plan is required to be reviewed quarterly, which is something we've been maintaining, and it's updated every four years. Like I said, we're outside of that scope a little bit, because we were waiting on the state. And we're required to have whole-community input. So, we have worked really hard to make sure that we're including community members in our plan and the creation of it, and getting input from the community for creating it. The Conclusion. The plan was developed utilizing national best-practice standards. It's to provide a structured framework for coordinating how we respond to emergencies, recovery efforts, and it details agency rules, operational guidelines, and hazard-specific strategies. Our goal is to save lives, reduce injuries, preserve community assets, property, and the environment. Thank you, guys. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you. Obviously, you have your act together and an excellent report. Is there anything this board can do to help you do your job?
I think you guys have done a great job supporting me, and just ask for continued support of Emergency Management. I ask that you adopt the base plan, so that we can continue to proceed and move forward.
Thank you.
I know you have several hours involved in this, and I want to thank you.
Hi. Thank you.
Chair. Obviously, serving on your committee, I'm fully aware of a lot of the work that went into this. So, just a couple of questions, too. When you talk on that fourth slide about deactivation, so something happens, a fire, whatever, can that be back to normal after seven days? Or what's that, what does that look like in order for it to go back to normal before they count, start that clock and we need to extend it?
Well, I'm going to be the, I'm going to tell you the first thing that I tell many people. I am by no means an operator, nor do I ever want to be an operator. But every incident is different, and is handled differently, and each situation's unique, and depending on the size of the fire, it just, it truly depends. I think four days, it could be a push if we got to the point where we were requesting a declaration, but, I mean, crazier things have happened.
Right. So, in other words, for our role and our chair is that if seven days has gone by and we're not back to normal, we need to extend that?
Correct. And that's, I mean, if we've gotten to the point where there's going to be a declaration, I'm going to be in regular communication with all of you.
I agree. So, on the full plan, a real detailed one, because I know there's a couple of the pieces of groups that work on this. One is a damage assessment official, and one is our Public Information Officer, which I know we're working on. Couple people went to the one training. I'll be going to the one in November. What, is that a negative when they see this, that that role's not filled? Do we have to force that, or just wait till we have the right fill?
They understand the dynamics of every county is different, and that I've communicated that we're working vigilantly, and that we've had turn over and change. So...
Alrighty. Other than that, you know, I think that the only other question I had was on some of the groups that we work with. It seems like we have the, the county of Oscoda has a mutual aid agreement. Is there any other counties that we need, or should have?
I have a meeting scheduled on the 25th of August to meet with the emergency managers that surround our county, to discuss what that would look like. With being a part of the Michigan Emergency Management Assistance Compact, that kind of negates the need for additional mutual aid agreements, because once we get to that state of emergency...
We're kind of all working together, anyway.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. I was just curious.
Yep.
Pretty detailed plan that you have to keep up with. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the opioid settlement funds, the Roscommon County Sheriff's Department.
One more. I thank the board for, I'm hoping, first, I hope you all got a copy of this proposal.
Yes.
Thank you guys for considering it and getting it on the table so soon. I know at the last meeting, you guys had talked about three months, as far as the opioid money, and I was able to talk with Rex and Mark and get it on here today, so I appreciate that very much. Some of this is going to be my opinion, and it's not all statistical, but I believe that a lot of our substance abuse is directly correlated with mental health and self-medicating. I've said that to a lot of you before in the past, and I still believe that, and I think the staff believes that, too. Our biggest liability in the county is the jail. Majority of our inmates that are in the jail either have substance abuse problems or mental health problems, and I think the ability to use this opioid settlement money to help treat, provide resources, and support for our inmates is really important. That's why we've proposed this opioid use disorder treatment and support program. You guys, for use of that opioid settlement funds money. It's a new program. It's not something we've had before in the past. We have a contract with Catholic Human Services where one of their support staff comes in, right now, one day a week, and provides counseling and some medical appointments and treatment facilities and things like that to a very small population of our inmates. It's a good program, but it's not large enough for what we have. I mean, we're averaging right now in our jail between 75 to 85 inmates every day. One person for four to eight hours a week can't cover that many, that many inmates. So, I think this program is needed. It's something that we've talked about for many years. People come to jail, they get clean while they're in jail, they get some help here and there, where it's available, but at the end of the day, when their sentence is done, they go back out the door, they go back into the same environment that they were in. They're not getting the treatment that they need, whether it's mental health or it's substance abuse, and they end up coming right back in. Or, worst-case scenario, they end up using, overdosing, dying. So, anything that we can do, I think, on a county level, is very important, not only for the people that are incarcerated, but also for their families that live in our communities. It's not just to affect that one specific person. If, I'm sure most of you have dealt with people in your families or friends that have had some type of substance abuse. It affects everybody. Well, that's why we've proposed this. On average, just talking with, with our jail nurse, Angie Griffiths, and Lieutenant Beck, we're spending roughly $12,000 a year just on medication for substance abuse, which I think that this, this settlement money will be able to help offset along with this position. Our medical staff, which comprises of Nurse Griffiths, she's at a minimum 10 to 15 hours a week just dealing with substance abuse. And that's very minimal. I mean, that's, she's doing the bare minimal to get people by. So, I think this position is very much needed, and I hope that you guys are able to support this, and I'll try to answer any questions that you may have.
How about if somebody's in?
Sorry, can you move that and turn on your mic?
How about if somebody's in and they leave the jail, can they come back for treatments?
This would be just-
Up to so many hours, or it's just inmates only?
So, this would be while they are incarcerated, but I'm hoping with this program, as it develops and grows, we're able to network with a lot of different organizations outside of the jail, that we can then, when they're leaving, we've already got them on the right path to go seek more treatment.
Perfect. And that's what we need in this community. Thank you.
When I met with him yesterday, that, I brought that forth, that these are the people who know what kind of help somebody might need when they leave the system, where they can possibly get it, and come back to us and say, "Hey, can we appropriate some money for this or that?"
That's beautiful, because we're just not throwing the person out on the street with no help.
Correct.
Thank you.
And that's, that's been our biggest struggle with the jail, is that wraparound services.
And I didn't mean throwing them out on the street.
Oh, I, I get what you mean, but there's got to be support outside of, outside of the jail, and that's what we're hoping this position will be able to do. Through connections and collaborations, we'll be able to direct people that are leaving to the resources that they need, whether it be housing, or employment, or counseling, treatment facilities, things of that nature.
And that's wrote into their program.
Thank you very much. I'm very happy with this program.
I'd like to add, we're looking at a four-year program, because this is new. Things are going to have to change during the process and get worked out, and so we thought four years would be a good run on it to see how it works, and we have enough funding to cover that four-year period. So, we were looking at that, and next meeting, we're probably going to bring forth a motion to appropriate, appropriate money for this program, and create a position that he needs filled for this program. Possibly add in, you know, he's given a figure of $100, $1,500. We may want to consider inflationary costs as this goes on, you know, because it's a four-year program. So, we may want to consider putting in some kind of percentage for that to keep the program running.
I'm all for it, and I feel this county has needed something like this for years, and we've talked about it in the past.
I mean, and lack of money and lack of resources and manpower, we haven't been able to do it. We've been talked about it, and I think this is the perfect opportunity. I think that's what this, this opioid settlement was designed for, and I think it goes on the right path. And hopefully, maybe one day, we can work this into as it develops, working with the prosecutor's office, working with the courts, probation and parole, to maybe try to work with diverting incarceration to different treatment facilities, or however that looks and however that works. Not everybody that comes in our jail should always be in our jail and incarcerated, but the lack of services don't allow us to do anything else with them. So, I'm hoping that this will, this will help.
We look at this like a starting point. As we go along, we'll see where we can enhance it.
Any other questions?
You have a plan to save lives. I'm supportive.
Yeah.
What you come up with, I'm going to be agreeing. Thank you. Thank you and your team.
Yes, Madam Chair. I did read it over, and no doubt, we need to do something. And I don't think the conversation about pushing it back was because we wanted to hold off. It was more about, I kept hearing, the timing right now for us and all of our teams, we're too busy, and the need to really talk to all those, but like Vanessa had on that little pipe, you know, each of these agencies that would contribute to the solution, not just us, and how do we minimize money, we pay Catholic services already a money, and what would that do to them? What services would they do? What would they not? That's a piece that I don't see, that I would like to see, before we start saying, I don't even, how much money, Rex, do we have in this whole fund?
Approximately a million.
A million.
As you talk about Catholic Human Services and the services that they provide, especially with this being a new program, I think it's an excellent collaboration between the two. Brian, who comes into our jail, will be able to help our person that we put in that position to direct them to resources maybe they don't know about. Our person that goes into that position can do pre-screening or recommend people to Brian through Catholic Human Services. I think it's a great collaboration, at least for the next couple of years.
And those are the people who've asked to be a part of this discussion. So, what I'm hearing is you want us to, we'll hire a person, which I totally believe, keeping it internal, far better than contracting it out. 100% agree with that. What I'm not, not sure of is, where is all the other money that we've just been doing this to, and this? Because if we keep spending all the other money in these departments and this, that's not a wraparound to me. That's not showing a collaborative...
I presented to the board my plan. We're starting with the Child Assessment Center. We're starting to deal with, at this age level, and then, we're going to try and work something in, so we, like you said, divert them from getting in the system. And then we're gonna deal with them in the system, and then they're gonna come back with recommendations once they get out of the system, what may be needed.
Yes, I've heard you say that.
Because once they go through this program, they'll, they understand-
So is this a part of this?
That's all our-
So this person, if we spend this money, is going to be doing what you just said?
These are, I'm talking to the child assessment.
I understand that.
See what they can come up with. That's not out of this money. This money is just for the program that's gonna happen-
Internal, right here.
Internally, right now.
Okay.
There's money left there for the other aspects of it yet, as we move along.
I think I'm just looking, and you know me, I'm looking at the budget and saying, okay, if this is the money we have, I really wanna make sure that we just don't go down a path of one, then all of a sudden, there's certain money that we need for collaborative services, and we're not duplicating money in different agencies.
That's why we're doing a four-year program, so there's money left for where it needs to go from here.
So you won't be using any of the other money in this four years? For any of the other groups that ask us for money?
This cost is a hundred, one thousand five hundred a year for four years. Yeah.
So will there be other money out of this fund that you're going to be needing in this four years? But you don't know that amount yet in this four year, only this amount. Are there any other services or people that need money from this fund?
They have not contacted me yet with a program.
Okay.
Yes, there's other places we need to use this money, but so far, I haven't had anything come forth yet, but it's in the works.
And Chief Hill, or not Chief Hill anymore, Brian Hill had contacted you.
Brian Hill has contacted me for the-
I know we have Tanya Lamir from Mid-Michigan has wanted to be a part of this, so I'm just making sure that those people are being in the loop as we work through a wraparound collaborative.
And I'm gonna be a little bit selfish here, and this is no offense to any outside organization. When the COVID money came in, we got four point two million dollars. I think the county itself kept about three to five hundred thousand dollars, and everything else went back out into the community.
Yep.
And then I think in the long run, where a lot of other counties, I'm not saying, I think that was the right thing to do. A lot of other counties kept it in-house and changed a lot of things and took care of a lot of things. I think we did the right thing. But at some point, the county's gotta look at, okay, what's best for county operations? All those other organizations are great, and I support all of them.
I understand.
But we gotta, I think personally, we have to take care of in-house before we start going outside. That's just my opinion.
I would not disagree with that. I just don't wanna keep giving money to outside when we're trying to create our program that's a wraparound where we don't keep duplicating money and effort. Use those agencies to the fullest that do their part well, and use what we do well, and make that the program. So if that's what I'm hearing you're doing, then I understand that, but I didn't get that from reading this, so, or haven't heard that detail, so.
Well, that's the way it was presented two weeks ago.
I remember you talking about it, yes, but I had not seen the plan that you were putting forth.
Hold it, this one here?
Yeah.
Right.
I didn't see any other plan other than what you talked about.
It's like, I've contacted the prosecutor's office, the Child Assessment Center. Jake is probably gonna get me something from that system. And then the sheriff's plan, they're addressing what this person may need after they leave the system.
All right. That helps for now. I may have more later, but that was very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wage and Salary Committee recommendations, committee members.
Good morning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name's Dakota Darso. I am a sergeant with the Sheriff's Department, accompanied by Noel here. You guys, I'm sure, are all familiar with her. As I said, I work with the Sheriff's Department, but today, I'm part of the Wage and Salary Committee, along with my colleagues that are sitting back there. We've spent the past couple of months going over different studies that Noel had put together, going over numbers to try to come up with what is gonna be a good recommendation that would be fair for the employees of this county and fair for the taxpayers of this county, fair for the budget. I just wanna start off by saying, it's been great working with other members of the county employees, you know, to represent as a whole, all of the employees of this county, to try to make this a great working environment for everybody. The Wage and Salary Committee is a committee, there's eight of us. We serve as an advisory board for you guys to try to kind of do an annual review of all the current wages in the county. We're trying to come up with a number, like I said, something that's fair to the taxpayers and also fair to the employees, to try to better the working environment here for everyone. Within this, there was a survey that was conducted, a wage survey that went through comparable counties. So Alpena County, Antrim County, Benzie County, Charlevoix County, Sheboygan County, Clare County, Crawford County, Gladwin County, Iosco, Manistee, Mesaki, Oceana, Ogama, Osceola, Atsigo, and Wexford County were all surveyed. Those are all comparable counties to us. They were selected for the market survey and are identified by comparable in size, budget, and demographics to kind of show a comparable job market. Now, it's not, you know, completely, you know, comparing apples to apples, right? Not everything is the same. Some of our jobs might have the same title as some of the other counties, but might have different, you know, things that we do within those jobs. You look at certain departments within our county, they might have differing things in their counties, but for the most part, they're fairly comparable to us. So with that, we compared, we did a market comparison, and it showed that our grades one through ten jobs, so all of our jobs that are within this county, are showing a negative three, about three and a half, three point five, three percent below the average. So our employees are, as a whole, are three and a half percent below the average of all the counties surveyed. So that's not on the high end, that's the average of everything. With that being said, our grades one through six, so we go up to ten in this county, our grades one through six are four point six percent, four point six, four percent below the average. So there's, and then seven through ten is one point four seven negative. So you can see our grades one through six are significantly lower than what our grades seven through ten are compared to the average of the other counties. So kind of what we found there, grades seven through ten disproportionately to grades one through six, wages in department head-level grades score closer to market value than, you know, the majority of what our employees are. And a majority of our employees in this county are grades one through six. That seven through ten is more of the department heads area, whereas the one through six is, you know, the, you know, average employee in this county. So also, in 2020, we had a change in this county that went from merit-based increases to step increases. So we went through the step system, so that's where we have, you know, our grades one through ten, but then there's steps within each one of those grades that will bring you up to another pay scale. So with that being said, we went in 2020 through that step increase. So it was supposed to be a yearly increase till you reach your top-out wage. Since then, we have gone, in 2020 was when the program started. 2021, there was a step increase. 2022, there was a step increase. 2023, it was voted to forego the step increase, so there was not one that year. 2024, there was another step increase. 2025, there was not a step increase. So instead of that yearly step increase that there was supposed to be, granted, we have, you know, had some times with the headly failing and things like that, where we have had some different financial hardships, but those step increases were foregoing. So the people that have been working in this county, the steps one through six, the majority that had been working here and were depending on getting that annual raise until they reached their top-out salary, were not getting any closer. And they were going years without getting any kind of raise. Now, I know last year, we voted to have a cost of living increase for the county, and we did that instead of that step increase. But with that being said, that step increase was here to encourage people to stay, right? The longer that you stay with our county, the more benefits that you get from it, right? You stay here five years, you get five years of raises on top of that. Well, over the past three years, we've had a very disproportionate, uncharacteristic turnover rate in this county. We have lost a lot of good employees that have gone on to other career paths where they make more money or where their benefits might be a little different. And granted, I've been working in this county for almost eleven years. One of the things that brought me to this county, to work here, was our great pay, our benefits, our retirement plans. Since that time, you know, eleven years ago when I started here, we were on top of those charts. Since then, we have fallen, you know, like I said, we're now four point six percent below the average. Our benefits have changed, you know, we've had a lot of change within this county. And like I said, we all understand that there's been some financial hardships within this county, especially since COVID happened, you know, a lot of things have changed around. But our county has fallen down, and we're losing employees because of that. In 2025, health insurance changed, and that affected our employees' pockets a lot, right? Granted, last year, the HSA was, or this year, I'm sorry, the HSA was funded through the county, you know, the health spending account to help forego some of that deductible, but it's still up in the air whether or not that's happening again for 2026, to my understanding. We still don't know what that's gonna entail, which is gonna cost employees money. There's also, with the new insurance, the out-of-pocket maximum that did not exist prior to 2025, we have a lot higher out-of-pocket maximum. So we've, our insurance has gone up, the employees' insurance has gone up. The wages have not gone up proportionately to that. So our recommendations to you guys that we looked over, we went through the wage studies that Ms. Martin put together, our recommendation was that we wanna continue to build, right? We wanna continue to build our employees, we wanna try to continue to build the morale of our employees. So we wanna work, we wanna work on trying to get those raises up. So we wanna do a scale adjustment for grades one through six, right? We're talking about possibly doing a four percent increase for grades one through six, to try to close that gap a little bit, to try to get us back on track to be around the average of what our comparable counties are. So that was our first priority. Second priority is a, go back to the annual step increases for grades one through ten. If we can go back to having those step increases instead of voting against the step increases, hopefully, that will build some of that morale in our employees, because it does cost money to bring new employees on, right? We have a good employee, we lose them, now we have to forego that expensive, taking the time and energy to go through hiring processes, to put ads out there, to do all that, to try to train somebody new. You know, when you bring in a new employee, you have to have an existing employee there to train them, so that's taking them away from their job. So hopefully, if we can, you know, build on that morale, we can keep our employees. The third is a three percent cost of living adjustment for grades one through ten. So that's kind of our third priority on these steps. So everybody gets that three percent cost of living increase. Some of the numbers, as far as what that will cost us, Noel had put together some figures. Do you wanna, can you go over that a little bit?
So if you turn to page eight, it gives, I have a little bit of a breakdown here and explain what those numbers mean. If you go to scenario two, that is worth a four percent adjustment to grades one through six with an annual step for all, one through ten, and also the three percent cost of living adjustment for grades one through ten. And so I had gone through earlier in July and updated, to the best of my knowledge and extent, all of our department head wage sheets and wage and health benefit sheets, and was able to input a new wage scale with what these adjustments would create and give you, try to give you the closest approximate number of what this would cost the county. So scenario two would cost approximately two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars to accomplish that. I also did take into account, there are a number of positions here in the county that we do receive funding for, and we get reimbursement either fifty percent, a hundred percent, twenty percent, whatever that might be. So I did try to put those numbers in too, in those figures, to give you a more approximate number. If, with scenario one, is just the four percent, which as I said, like Dakota mentioned, we are recommending that the four percent be the number one priority. And that also includes, this number also includes the annual step for one through ten. That would cost approximately one hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. If you skip real quick down to scenario three, just step increases for 2026, I wanted to give you what that looks like, so you can see the differential between that. That would, just step increases as scheduled, would cost approximately eighty thousand dollars. So breaking it down just a little bit further for you, what does this increase do to the general fund? So a difference for scenario two, which is the full recommendation of the Wage and Salary Committee, would do, would cost a hundred and seventy-four thousand five hundred and fifty dollars and fifty-seven cents approximately to the general fund. Just scenario one, doing the most important of what the Wage and Salary has recommended, would cost approximately a hundred and four thousand dollars. And this is just to help give you an idea, some kind of tangible number to work with, instead of saying, hey, we want you to do three percent, well, what does that mean? And it's hard to make decisions like that sometimes. There are a lot of things to still yet be looked at, what this would do to retirement. There's a little bit more involved in that for my spreadsheets, but it is very easy now I have all this set up, it should be very easy to figure these things out for you all. And so with what you decide, what direction you'd like to try to look at, and to give direction to Jody and I, to be able to give you information and numbers about what might be possible for you guys to do for this next budget year. And with that, I just wanna recognize all of the Wage and Salary Committee members. Most of them are here today, Loretta Bell from the Treasurer's Office, Sergeant Dakota Darso, Sheriff's Office, Keely Darso, Probate and Family Court, Kim Kersey, Prosecutor's Office, Nicole Lehman from the District Court Office, Carrie Muse Mead from the Clerk's Office, Will Tarrant from Animal Control, and then myself as Administration Representative. If you have any questions, we really thank you for your time and consideration for the committee's recommendation.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you. Any questions for Noel?
I do. Yes. So just so you guys know, I haven't seen any of this. This is fun and new for me too. So thank you. You guys did a great job. I love your presentation. I know last year, there was questions from department heads and the office holders that they wanted to see the data-
Absolutely.
-that supported that, so if that's something you guys could share with me, so then I can share out with the department heads and the elected officials, I would appreciate it. But thank you. You guys did a great job.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Noel, this does not reflect increases in retirement funds, correct?
Correct. It does not.
This is just hourly wages?
Hourly rate. It did not include Social Security and Medicare. I do have those totals, but I didn't want to bog down today, because today was really the wage recommendation. However, I do have those totals. Retirement, well, retirement increases every year, regardless of what wages do, because of our unfunded liability with the pension plan. So I'm putting those numbers in currently for all of the, all of the funds, because we have to pay for everyone who's retired and beneficiaries and such still. And our unfunded is still about, just about, we're funded exactly what we were last year. So we still have a large amount to do. But what these increases would be, for the most part, are going to be with our defined contribution plans, about five, you can average about five percent. with our defined contribution plans, about five, you can average about 5%.
Yep.
Um, and then,
Matching contribution.
What's, yeah, yeah.
And I know like as far as,
And Social Security is probably about seven and a half percent.
Seven, 7.65% for both Social Security and Medicare. Yep.
And like as far as like the Sheriff's Department side of things go, we're going into contract negotiations this year. So I know like a lot of these figures won't really necessarily affect us, uh, with the recommendations. They may, but, um, we're, we're going to be doing it. Six is kind of still up there. So I'm guessing that a majority of the stuff that we went over today is probably going to be, the rest of the county could potentially fall onto us, but there's going to be union representatives forward and discussing all that stuff too, so.
We have a long, long few months ahead of us, but we got it. We got it. I'm sticking to it.
Yes.
I want to thank you for the time your whole group has put in. And the, you mean, a lot of work. Thank you.
So one of the things, um, to, to filter back, um, thank you guys for being on schedule as well because we did have, um, August 13th, Board of Commissioner Wage and Salary Committee recommendations. Um, what Noel and I, um, will need from the Board of Commissioners is, can we have the okay to finish our, our spreadsheets and then get you those totals at the next meeting? So you can discuss and review what that total package looks like for those changes, um, as that goes. So basically we'll be inputting these. Um, and then once you guys kind of give an idea on the 27th, we'll be able to send out the revenue worksheets at least at the end of August. So.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
Just a couple of questions. So when you did the survey that showed that we were below the average for all those, right? Was that just wages or was that total compensation package included?
Just wages.
Just wages. Okay. All right. Got it.
I'd love to be able to do total compensation package.
It's diff- I understand that's difficult because everybody's compensation packages are different too.
But it does play, it does play an effect. In fact, a lot of our discussion, um, was driven by a talk about the health insurance costs and what that,
Benefits and things like that, time off and all that that gets included in that compensa- okay. Um, and if I understand what, the section about what do increases do to the general fund, that number, you, I think you mentioned something that some employees we get reimbursed for. So that's a number that really incorporates, okay, yes, this is the big number, but this is the amount that it will really impact you in the general fund. Okay.
That's where I read it. Yeah, and, and I will say that those are approximations because, um, there are going to be nuances to everything.
This is a good start. I mean, I know you don't have all that. If we give you that okay, then that'll give us a better total.
Picture.
Of it. Okay. And if I also understand, this has nothing to do with merit or performance. There is nothing in anything we do that takes that into consideration.
Correct.
You're not a, not to say we have any, but I have in my own business. It just doesn't work as hard as everybody else. They would get the same thing and that is what you're recommending and that's okay. That's what I'm hearing?
Correct. There, no.
Well, that's what we're,
That's what the way that,
Technically, that's what our wa- our pay scale has been.
Right.
It's just,
Cause we went away from merit to step.
Exactly.
Department heads do have the ability to recommend higher, um, wage, like up onto, uh, higher steps for someone who maybe has gone above or beyond or has taken on additional duties and such. And that has occurred. That has occurred.
Commissioner Morley, we also leave, um, the deviation of that is up to each individual department head and office holder as well. We have had several instances where, let's say, we have an employee who has only been on for three months. Um, they were hired in, in October, and I have had an elected official contact me and say, at this time, this person's performance does not merit a, you know, I'm okay with them getting the 3%, but the step will hold off for six months until I do a review of their performance. Um, so they have that in the policy, they have that individual ability and certainly execute it when needed.
That's helpful. Thank you. Well done. Thank you for the info. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Roscommon County Airport Taxi Lane and Four-Unit Tea Hangar Airport Manager.
Commissioner Milburn won't mind if I take all of his time.
That's not much. It's not going to get you very far.
They cut me off one time, so, you know, I'm just saying.
All right. This is for informational purposes only. Um, there is no action required today or, report projects. But what we're going to talk about, this is a kind of a refresher. Thank you. Um, are the upcoming projects we have on the airport, the first one there at the top, I have copies here, people. Um, the reconstruct runway lighting 927, uh, that project is a federal, state, and local project, okay? Typical, uh, project for an airport that, like ours. And the way the funding plays out is, uh, FAA pays 90%, the state pays five, and our county share is 5%. So the total estimated cost for the runway lighting rehabilitation is $561,567. The MDOT shares $28,078, county shares $28,080, okay? So when we have a, a standard project like this, there is a process by which the paperwork has to be completed. And if you look there, what, what we have completed to date is a sponsor resolution allowing or having, uh, Chairman Censor authorized to sign any contracts that we have with the MDOT or the FAA, okay? So that sponsor resolution has been completed. Uh, of course, the motion and moving on, the exception of the sponsor contract, which you have done, sponsor certifications, which has been done. And the one thing I did not put in there was a construction agreement, those have been signed and returned back to Pryon and Newhoff. And then we, there was one pending document, I have it now, it's the, uh, the CA agreement between, i- it's our airport consultants that are going to be onsite to oversee the project, okay? That, that number, uh, their, their agreement is $39,100. That is included in the total project cost, okay? We're still on the hook for our 5%. We've been billed one time, we have one invoice that came in for $2,000, okay? So we will eventually pay our $28,080. Any questions on that? That's a standard federal, state, and local project. Moving on, infrastructure, Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act and the bipartisan Infrastructure Law Bill, they're kind of used interchangeably now, uh, with the new administration. They've changed it to the IIJA, okay? But it's still the same funding source, okay? So the taxi lane design has been completed. And if you recall, you approved and agreed to pay the upfront $15,000 design fee for the taxi lane project. We're going to get reimbursed as the grant comes in. It's, it's, it's slowly trickling in now to other airports. We're going to see the reimbursement, okay? The taxi lane construction, total estimated cost, $215,110. We, because this is a non-standard project, the funding, uh, is coming from a different source. Um, the, the process, the paperwork process is a little bit different. Um, you know, so it, it's not going to be the standard rollout of our necessary paperwork that has to get signed and then returned. The first step here was the, uh, sponsor certifications. Chairperson Censor has signed those and returned them to MDOT. The next piece would be the, uh, sponsor resolution, the sponsor contract, and the construction agreement, okay? And so those, the sponsor contract is the one that needs to be acted upon by, by this board, okay? This is standard stuff. It's just rolling out in a different fashion because of the, the funding source that's coming through. Again, the, uh, consultant and, and engineering agreement, the $17,300 that you see there is included in the total project cost. Now with the IIJA slash bill, the, the, the design and the construction and the design for the four-unit tea hangar coming next year is 100% funded through the IIJA and the bill money. There is no local match. No local match, zero. Okay, so it's 100% funded by the feds, okay? And so the, the design for the four-unit tea hangar is going to be rolled into the taxiway construction project, okay? And then the construction for the four-unit tea hangar taking place next year, that too is 100% funded through IIJA slash BIL, okay? Non-standard, non-standard funding. These are projects that are needed. Runway lighting is old and tired, leaky, electrically that is, and we do need more tea hangers. Okay, we have a waiting list right now, um, for, for aircraft storage. Any questions?
Any questions?
Build the tea hangers. Just build them.
It's coming. It's coming.
Been talking about it for years.
The next year.
Build them.
It's coming.
Kill me with the details, Eric.
Thank you, Eric.
Okay, thank you.
Eric, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. That's okay. I just want to make sure I'm very clear as well.
Okay.
These next two with the IIJA and what, these two projects, the taxi lane and the unit hangar, not only is it 100% funded by them, if I recall the past meetings, there is no, we don't need to do that upfront and then get reimbursed at all.
That is correct.
Like the other project. This will just be, when we get the money, we can do the project.
That's correct.
Got it. That's what I thought.
There's no upfront.
No upfront.
No upfront. Not, not for the, the taxi lane construction or the four-unit tea hangar design.
Right. Got it. That's what I thought. I just want to make sure I got it.
Question?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, it's not a matter of when we get the money, we build it. We build it and get the money. Is that correct?
Say again?
It's not, we get the money and build it, we build it and then get the money. Is that not correct? Yes.
Correct.
When we do the hangers. Okay.
You're talking about the construction of the four-unit tea hangar? That, that, that money is going to be flowing through,
As we progress in the project.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay. September 11th, 2025 Remembrance Ceremony, Commissioner Mark Milburn.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Dave and I are kind of tag teaming. 24 years ago, 9/11/2001, the day changed forever when the bombing occurred.
I'm sorry, Mark. There can't hear. Can you bring your microphone a little closer? Thank you.
24 years ago, in 2001, our, our lives were changed forever. Dave and I are going to work together in collaboration with the different fire departments. And what we'll do is we're going to have our ceremony start at 8:46 a.m. That's the day, that's the time that the first World Trade Center was, uh, crashed into. What we'll do is we'll do the opening remarks, we'll do a quick prayer. We'll have, uh, we'll ring the bell 24 times. Phil Benali will, uh, play the trumpet. Uh, post 40, 30, 40, we'll shoot the guns, we'll do a quick benediction. And Louis Areola, who I haven't talked with yet, will do, uh, bagpipes. This ceremony shouldn't last more than 15 minutes. It's not so much important that, uh, the, the length of it is the fact that we do it out of respect and remembrance of those. And we'll ask, we'll ask Darlene and Jody to raise the flag. It should be quick and impactful. I would like to ask the sheriff's consideration of maybe, shouldn't have the road down for 15 minutes. I'll get a, I'll get a news release out to Krista so she can put in the paper. That'll happen again, uh, September 11th, next month.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? With no further discussion, this meeting is adjourned and our next meeting will start at 10:20.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic of British Stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Morley?
Here.
Russo?
Here.
Wolfson?
Here.
Milburn?
Here.
Censor?
Here.
Approval of the agenda, we do need to add two motions regarding the inner-county cost-sharing agreement, Fox versus Saginaw County. Um, we were all provided these additional two motions this morning.
To move with the dishes, Madam Chair.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please. Wolfson? Morley?
Yes.
Censor?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Russo?
Yes.
Motion carried. Approval of the consent agenda. We have meeting minutes from July 23rd, 2025, Lake Level Control Structure Special Meeting and July 23rd, 2025 Board Meeting. Class As in the amount of $1,414,676.64 and claims and accounts in the amount of $255,566.17. Correspondences A through E, letters regarding current lawsuits, letters regarding the damage that high waters do on Higgins Lake, the MAC Legislative Update, letter regarding information about Higgins Lake and the control structure, freshwater trail and placement of the second fish, monthly department reports, sheriff activity and revenue reports for June and July, the animal control shelter stats, the Administrator Controller Report, and the Clerk and Register of Deeds Update Report. Do I have a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
Let's go move.
Second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Roll call, please. Milburn?
Yes.
Wolfson?
Yes.
Censor?
Yes.
Morley?
Yes.
Russo?
Yes.
Motion carried. Public comment on agenda items only. Is there any public comment?
I'll be the judge of that.
No, honestly, I don't even have my, uh,
Wow.
No papers. No laptop.
No, one of the agenda items is going to be talking about public comment. And I believe Mr. Milburn brought this up, or Commissioner Milburn brought this up at the last meeting. And I think that's what you're going to be talking about, correct?
At some point. Mm-hmm.
Okay. Uh, I support going back to the old way of being able to have a public comment, not addressing the agenda items both, at both periods during the, uh, the meeting. The reason for that, that's, first of all, that's the way it used to be. Sometimes people only have so much time in the day, they, they can come in, make their public comment. Sometimes it is about the agenda items, sometimes it, it wouldn't be. But otherwise they ha- sometimes they have to hang around. Like right now, we're already 25 minute, 20 minutes late in getting this meeting off. So if a person wanted to talk and make a public comment, they would have, they may have to wait hours, depending on how long that meeting lasts. So I support going back to the old way, and I believe that's what Commissioner Milburn is going to be talking about, where you, the more public comment that you have and the more input you have from the public, the better it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on agenda items? Visitors, do we have any visitors? Unfinished business. Discussion on agenda item number 12, public comment person slash group, Commissioner Milburn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think Mr. Ostrich was talking about the comment in number six, but on the agenda, we're talking about 12. I believe is that, you know, we talk about transparency and I've been, I've been very consistent on this throughout the years. If, I'm not sure how you would define a group. Uh, is Dave and Craig a group? Is Eric and, Is Eric and Greg Ciemack a group? Bottom line is, we have a responsibility to listen to every individual if they have something to say. And I don't think we should define it as a group and have, I think what we're trying to do is, I don't think we're trying to do it on purpose, but I think to the public, we affect, curtail the public's, an opportunity to speak to us as a group. That's all I have, Madam Chair, thank you.
Does anybody have any comment?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
My understanding how it is, is if someone represents themselves as speaking for a group, that would be considered a group. It's self-proclaimed, not determined by the board. And where you could get into problems if we don't consider it that way, then as it progressed, some other people from that group may decide now they want to peg on to something that was said. So I think when, when people come to us and they have a spokesperson, and that is proclaimed to be the spokesperson for that group, that's treated as one public comment.
The chair does have some, at the disposal of the chair, the chair always has that option to be able to say to the group, does anybody have a differing opinion? Because we've been presented with three or four present, you know, opinions of the same, same nature. The chair does have that option to say to the public, ladies and gentlemen of the public, does anyone have a different viewpoint that they'd like to share? Because sometimes what we do is we get a lot of people who's talking about the same issue. The bottom line is though, is I still think it's like circuit court. You go to court, the people have a right to be able to address the judge. The judge has the ability to be able to stop the discussion if it's disruptive. But the bottom line is, we have an obligation, we have an obligation to listen to the public. And I think that's putting down the fact that we're going to have a comment per person slash group is disrespectful to the public, and I do think it curtails transparency.
Any other comments?
I'm not even sure why this is even back on the agenda to talk about, because all we did was move public comment after, or move our board comments to after public comment, down to twelve, so that we have an opportunity to share with people, if we have an answer at that time, to give an answer. So is the question about a group, I think Commissioner Wilson explained, as the chair, if there's a hundred people in here, and to hopefully not go long, like everybody else, then would say, then you have an ability to say, are there any people with other, I don't think we're saying we won't take public comment. Is that what you're thinking we're saying?
Steeze, Steeze, public comment slash person slash group. I think it's unclear to me what group means. Is Craig and Dave a group?
He wants basically, he wants basically the group taken off in the board.
Group taken off.
Laws.
Just public comment. And I don't feel comfortable with public comment for five minutes per person for board comment too, but we'll talk about that later down the road.
I believe that the chair, no matter who sits in that position, has the ability to manage the public. That is the job. So if you don't want to put group in there, but you're okay if we can do a group, then I'm okay with that. Take the word off. It's just a word.
If you can take the word group off, I'd be very comfortable with that, Madam Chair, thank you.
We can bring that on for.
Discussion.
A vote at the next meeting at the end of the month. Draft copy of the vehicle driver safety policy, Commissioner Wolfson, would you like to lead that discussion?
Yeah, we thought that was going to be a simple thing, but apparently. Statutes and.
MMRMA have.
Stuff that has to be involved in it.
Recommendations on how that needs to proceed.
Controller has put something together and given it to us, all to review. It sounds like we have very little say on what can be in it.
You have lots of say of what can be in it, you just have to make sure you comply with all the laws and liability insurance.
Anyway, we'll put that off for approval until the next meeting, so people have time to review it.
Sounds good.
The one question I did have is, I know most of our county vehicles are all marked. Do we want something in there that they all should be marked as county vehicles? I don't know.
It's a different issue than this issue.
Is it? Yeah, I would say yes. I think the recommendation has always been that they are marked, and I would say probably the only vehicle we currently have that is not marked is maybe the new truck for maintenance that still hasn't gone in yet. And the vehicle that the airport utilizes for courtesy vehicle for pilots, which I'm okay if that one's not marked.
We did have magnetic signs for some of them.
We do have magnetic, so our gypsy moth have magnetic signs so that when they are out and about, they put those on the sides of the vehicle as well. So. Okay. No new business. So we have motions and resolutions. Whenever our clerk is ready.
Local governmental agreement between Crawford County Board of Commissioners and Roscommon County Board of Commissioners for the purpose of administering the County Development Block Grant Emergency Housing Programs for Roscommon County. Agreement is effective August one, two thousand twenty-five through July three, two thousand twenty-six.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call. Milburn.
Yes.
Morley.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Number two, move to adopt resolution number two zero two five dash zero eight dash one, Child Care Fund, two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six budget adoption. Whereas the Roscommon County Thirty-Fourth Circuit Court Family Division has prepared the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six State Child Care Fund Annual Plan and Budget. And whereas, programming has been classified as, but not limited to, family foster care, institutional care, in-home care, and foster care during the period of appeal after parental release. And whereas, as the anticipated net expenditures are one million, four hundred eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred eighteen dollars and seventy-eight cents, of which eligible expenditures will be reimbursed by the state at up to seventy-five percent. And whereas, one million, one hundred eighteen thousand, four hundred thirty-nine dollars and eight cents, these expenditures will return projected state reimbursement revenues of one million, one hundred eighteen thousand, four hundred thirty-nine dollars and eight cents. And whereas, to receive state funding, all expenditures for programs are required to be included in the State Child Care Fund budget. And whereas, expenditures are aligned with Roscommon County's two thousand twenty-five adopted budget and the two thousand twenty-six budget currently under development. And whereas, to receive reimbursement for expenditures, the State Child Care Fund budget requires the authorizing signatures of the Chief Judge of the Family Division, the Director of the Department of Health and Human Services, and the Chair of the Board of Commissioners. And whereas, this matter has been reviewed by the County Administrator Controller's Office and the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners hereby do authorize the submission of the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six State Child Care Fund budget summary to the State of Michigan Department of Health and Human Services Office of Federal Compliance Child Care Fund Monitoring Unit for total estimated expenditures of one million, four hundred eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred eighteen dollars and seventy-eight cents for the period of October one, two thousand twenty-four to September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five.
So move, Madam Chair.
That's the wrong year.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have to make a correction, that is for October one, two thousand twenty-five to September thirty, two thousand twenty-six.
Question noted, Madam Chair.
And mine didn't have an eight after the seven.
Mine didn't either, so I had to refer to the front page.
Okay. Roll call, please.
I'm sorry, who made the motion in the second?
I made it, I second.
Thank you.
Milburn, Russo.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Morley.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Resolution adopted. Number three, move to rescind the Roscommon County policy for expense reimbursements effective August thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Expense reimbursement procedures and protocol have been incorporated in the newly adopted policy.
So moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Morley.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Motion carried. Number four, move to adopt resolution number two zero two five dash zero eight dash zero two, resolution to approve settlement agreement, Fox v. Saginaw County et al. One moment, I'll read that resolution for you. Resolution to approve settlement agreement, Fox v. Saginaw County et al., Eastern District of Michigan, case number one, colon nineteen dash C V dash one one eight seven, sorry, I don't know how they pronounce those. Resolution number two zero two five dash zero eight dash zero two. Whereas Fox filed a class action complaint against a number of counties in the United States District Court for the Eastern District of Michigan in Civil Action, number one nineteen C V one one eight seven complaint. And whereas, parties have been exploring and preparing defenses and participating in settlement negotiations under the oversight of the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals mediation process. And whereas, the parties are desirous of avoiding future litigation and controversy, controversy, and after extensive negotiations have agreed to certain terms and conditions set forth in the settlement and release agreement, subject to approval by the court and as outlined by counsel. As, and whereas, the county understands that the settlement and release agreement is a compromise of a disputed claim and that payments made and conditions state herein are not to be construed as an admission of liability on the part of the parties being released by who all liability is expressly denied. And whereas, after consultation with legal counsel and the county treasurer, and upon the recommendation and endorsement of the settlement by each, the county believes it is in the best interests of the citizens of Roscommon County to resolve the litigation in accordance with the settlement and release agreement, subject to approval by the court. Therefore, be it resolved that the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners approves entering into the settlement and release agreement in connection with Civil Action, number one fourteen C V zero one two seven four, subject to approval by the court. This doesn't match. Nope, so it should be the first one?
Yeah.
So. Civil Action, number one nineteen dash C V dash one one eight eight seven, subject to approval by the court. Be it further resolved that the chairperson of the Board of Commissioners and county clerk are hereby authorized to sign the settlement and release agreement on behalf of Roscommon County and the county treasurer and encouraged, is encouraged to execute the settlement and release, subject to approval by the court, after approval as to form by the county attorney.
So moved. For a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Do we give this out to the public in time for people to review it?
The actual motion?
Ma'am.
We didn't receive the motion from, we didn't receive the motion from the attorney until Monday afternoon.
So should we move on it today, or should we wait two weeks?
You have to move on it today, otherwise you cannot participate in the settlement. And it was a discussion that you had at a special meeting as well.
Discuss that.
I want to make sure that the public got the notice. So does it fall within our parameters to be able to move forward on a motion that we got on Monday?
Yes.
Mm-hmm, because we have already discussed it.
Yep.
That's what I wanted to, okay, thank you.
Yep. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Russo.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Morley.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Resolution adopted. Number five, move to authorize chairperson Darlene Censor to sign on behalf, on behalf of the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners and Roscommon County Treasurer's Office, the inter-county administrative expense and cost-sharing agreement for settlement in Fox v. Saginaw County et al., E D Michigan, number one nineteen dash C V dash one one eight seven.
Have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
Same question, ma'am, applies to this one?
Yep.
Wanted to understand. Thank you.
You're welcome. Roll call, please. Morley.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Motion carried. Committee reports. Commissioner Morley.
All right. Um, July twenty-fourth, we were working on preparation for the Higgins Lake informational meeting. On the twenty-fifth, I had some office hours here doing similar work and working on the presentation for today at one o'clock. On the twenty-ninth, I had some more office hours, some emails, phone calls, working on these presentations as well. On the thirtieth, there was a prep meeting for the Higgins Lake informational meeting. On August first, I think several of us were able to come and join Nadine and her retirement party and celebrate the work that she's done here at the county for the animal shelter. August fourth, the D N R, there was a meeting with the D N R regarding the Special Assessment District to discuss what was coming and what those assessments would be with them. On the sixth, Higgins Lake informational meeting as was held at the high school. On the seventh, we did a debrief of that meeting and looked at several of the questions. There were a couple of people who had some very good questions about their plot or their land, and those were immediately resolved the very next day, and so the group responded to them. On the eighth, we did some prep for our special meeting today at one o'clock. And I'll just have to say, due to the amount of, you know, prep for all these meetings, I was not able to attend Higgins Township, Garrish Township, or the Village Council meetings this month, but I did send them a written, just a summary of what's been going on and some dates to keep in their back pocket of what we're working on. There was, I will be gone starting tomorrow, the fourteenth or the twenty-eighth. I do have, will have my phone, it's not like I can't respond. I will have a laptop, but I will not be at a desk or here in person for other meetings. We are still working to put together the Q and A that came from the informational meeting. We're going to put that together and try to get that on the lake level website as well. That's it.
Commissioner Milburn.
Attending the Roscommon and Nestor Townships, nothing of great, we are working with a veteran out of Roscommon Township that needs some help right now. Won't provide a name. I must, I must say, I was very impressed with Commissioner Morley's talk the other day at the, at the Roscommon High School. I thought she did an exceptional job. That's all I have, thank you, ma'am.
Commissioner Russo.
Authority Board meeting, that lake meeting at the Roscommon High School. It was a good attendance. That's it, thank you.
I had several meetings in conjunction with the Higgins Lake, the S A D methodology, learning how to use constant contacts, hours of responding to phone calls, emails, and logging the lake level emails and phone calls. Agenda meeting on August seventh, followed by a special meeting. Continued work on presentations that will happen later today. Follow-up on questions in regards to all the lake level structures, and tomorrow I have a whole lake improvement board meeting.
Commissioner Wolfson.
Yes, in attending the Bacchus Township meeting, it came to light we're possibly going to see solar farms in this county. One landholder had been in contact with a solar farm company, and they contacted Bacchus Township about their ordinance on having such a thing.
Commissioner, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is that a private landowner who wants it on their property?
Apparently a private landowner was going to enter into a contract with the.
Oh, got it. So wasn't county land?
No, it was not public.
So they do, as a private owner, have that ability to do that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, I was just curious.
And also, been working on the materials management stuff. We put in a request for money. Had correspondence with, finally figured out who the person I'm supposed to contact is, because that information was not easy to come by. Did get a response from him about the funding. Her response seemed more favorable than what I've been getting from other sources, so I guess we'll see how that plays out. Also, I talked to a couple of the townships about curbside pickup, and it just won't work for them, they said. It's just, the cost is too astronomical. One being Bacchus Township, one being Asabo Township, just because of the geographic layout and, you know, the route would be a lot of miles for few people being picked up. And I would assume Nestor Township. And I would assume Nestor Township is probably in the same boat. So when we move forward on this, I need to keep that in consideration. Asabo Township has a dumpster there for recyclables. It was picked up twice a month, now they're going to four times a month to have that picked up. And I relayed that to our, our consulting company because they're taking inventory of what we have and available. That's it.
Public comment, is there any public comment?
Okay, I want to go first. I made one copy, this is on the call, they're very expensive. You already, y'all already have a copy of this on the, on your website, the commissioner's website, or the lake level website?
Yep.
And you have that to follow along if you want to? My name's Eric Ostergren, former commissioner and backlotter on Higgins Lake. I'm here to address a significant issue regarding the maintenance of legal water levels on Higgins Lake as mandated by the declaratory judgment from Judge Bennett on May seventh, two thousand twenty four. It's been over fifteen months since that ruling. And we will be filing a show cause hearing against this commission due to its failure to meet those legal obligations shortly. As of yesterday, August twelfth, the water levels on Higgins Lake were reported to be three point four inches below legal level, well below the legal threshold. While I appreciate the recent steps taken to obtain a permit for replacing the rocks that were illegally removed back in two thousand fourteen, this feels like an instant response. Urgent needs still present. On March tenth, two thousand twenty three, the Michigan Supreme Court denied the county's appeal from the Court of Appeals ruling which clearly stated that the county had a duty to maintain the legal levels on Higgins Lake. Seven months later, on October third, two thousand twenty three, the commission took a positive step by having Luke O'Brien from the Spicer Group produce a webinar that is available on the website. It's only nineteen minutes. I know it must have cost a substantial amount to produce. In that webinar, he outlined several recommendations for improving the dam and enhancing the delegated authority ability to manage lake levels. Unfortunately, it appears that none of these recommendations have been addressed over the last two years. To reiterate, Luke O'Brien's recommendation included constructing a concrete apron, replacing and improving the sheet pile wall, conducting additional engineering evaluations, installing a restrictor plate in the unregulated float notch, replacing stoplogs with fabricated inserts to minimize leakage. Additionally, the operational action items produced by Luke included automating tilted weir gates and record keeping, increasing the height of the sheet pile and the gates to reduce water loss from waves, modifying the low notch for better metering. Luke emphasized that these recommendations were addition, in addition to those made back in two thousand ten. Regrettably, it seems that none of these critical recommendations have been acted upon. The commission's inaction, despite clear guidance and legal obligations, has left us in this precarious position. One of the options Luke mentioned was that you could do nothing, but that option was eliminated on May seventh, two thousand twenty four, when the court reaffirmed that this commission has a duty to maintain the water levels on Higgins Lake. The lack of action in response to this declaratory judgment and the recommendations from the Spicer Group raises concerns that will now need to be addressed in court. However, there is a significant opportunity for positive change. In Chairman Censor's recent mail, email, she mentioned that we're all in this together. I agree. Yet, that does not seem to be the case. Your refusal to communicate with us suggests that we are viewed as adversaries rather than constituents or partners. This approach is misguided and fosters an adversarial relationship with us, your constituents, reflecting poor legal advice. Instead of excluding those involved in legal actions from the Lake Advisory Board, you should be encouraging their participation as stakeholders. I urge you to reconsider this stance. Collaborating with us can help mitigate further legal complications. Eagle is the true adversary here. I encourage you to find the courage to stand up to Eagle rather than against your constituents. I also urge this commission to file for permits with Eagle to repair and modify the L L C S as recommended by Luke O'Brien. If Eagle denies these requests, you will be better positioned to demonstrate to the court that you are actively fulfilling your responsibility to the community and the court order. In other words, you need to embrace the suck, which means accepting and enduring difficult situations rather than resisting them. It's about acknowledging hardship and finding a way to persevere, often to achieve a larger objective. This phrase, commonly used in military concept, context, applies to any situation requiring endurance through discomfort. So let's embrace the suck and work together toward a substantial, sustainable solution for Higgins Lake. I look forward to further dialogue on that subject. Finally, I hope you go back and review the October third, two thousand twenty three webinar, including the monologue that Luke O'Brien presented to this commission. It's on your website. I hope you start thinking about how you can temporarily restore the lake levels before a permanent structure can be properly designed and built. Installing the rocks in the stream bed is a start, but much more needs to be done. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Right on time, Honorable.
Any other public comment? Yes, come on up.
My name is Greg Seenack, I'm a Garrish Township resident. And earlier in the meeting, it was said that one of the reasons that the, um, the sequence of public comment was changed was so that questions could be answered during the board comments. And I have two questions that I'm hopeful will be answered during board comments. One is that one of the people brought up in the meeting on August sixth, that he wasn't certain that the ownership of the road ends was properly handled. And so he was told that someone would get back to him with that answer. And I just wonder if that was one of the things that was mentioned earlier, that someone answered all the questions that were brought up? And if, if not, when his answer might be forthcoming? And the second question that I have is, today at one o'clock, there's a meeting, a special meeting, and it appears as though the only thing that's really on the agenda to discuss is something called the Lake Level Presentation Mythbuster. And so my, my question is, if someone could explain to me exactly what that presentation might entail? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Morning.
Good morning.
Yep.
Round across, Mobility Manager, Roscommon County Transit Authority. I wanted to let you all know that we do have a vacant seat on our board. Excuse me. It is representing economic development. Any letters of interest can be directed right to Stephen DeVois, our executive director. And we're still looking for drivers and dispatchers and still providing N E M T twenty-four seven. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other public comment? Board comment. Commissioner Morley, would you like to start?
I can. First off, I want to make a few board comments because a lot of this comes in the consent packet. But I just wanted to talk about the sheriff's report, you know, it just seems like July was even busier than June and give them a lot of credit for the extra work that has to be done. There's been more mileage, more contacts made, the average population, you know, in the jails up a bit. So that is a lot of work on their end and just seeing those trends is really helpful in that report. The animal control report as well, another busy, busy month with a lot more of the strays. More mileage obviously comes with that, that's an expense that they have to incur. Probably got one of their best donation months of the whole year so far. I think there was one that was a lot bigger, but this was still a pretty good one. So kudos to the people who donate to the work that they are doing. On the controller report, um, looks like there's a new lawsuit, but it's not lake level related, so that was a positive. There was a discrepancy apparently in the nine one one G I S discrepancy and, you know, maybe just a little bit of update on that would be helpful, just kind of where that happened, but you don't have to if you don't.
No, I'm okay with that, um, because it is fairly important. So throughout the course of probably the last six months to a year, as our nine one one has grown stronger again and they are now partnering fully with our address issuance. Quick history, we got thrown address issuance about nine years ago because consumers' energy got out of the business. So as that process has come to light, we have found that despite, um, moving forward, issuing addresses incorrect and easy to find fashions, we have a lot of outliers in our townships and communities where, um, maybe I live across the street from you when you're two one four, I live across the street and I'm seven ninety-two. We're both even on odd sides and six hundred apart. That is something that is going to need to become a focus. It will be a larger project. I would like to look at moving forward with that in instituting, using our G I S and our G I S capabilities to identify those and then kind of making that project. It is a more of a future, but it's something we have to start taking some small incremental steps to, to include. We are a senior county and not being able to locate addresses. The biggest part of this is, as our neighbors in Ogama County found four or five years ago, the only way to make people change their addresses by impacting an ordinance for doing that. As we find them now, we reach out, we ask nicely, but if you've been there forty years, the last thing you want to do is change your one oh one B and a half address so that they can find your neighbor when they have a heart attack, so.
The project we'll probably go on to start thinking through, yeah.
Yes.
That's work. And a thank you to our maintenance department on that report because of the work they had to do with the landfill and doing that. So thanks to them. Our clerk's report, obviously the jury qualification work that took place, thank you for your team and the people that spent time to do that. So. Those were just comments from the reports that we've had. I will say that there's been a lot of questions from that informational meeting, talking about, you know, is this a project, is it not? And I truly believe since that is still in the hands of the court, that those are conversations, it's just a difference of interpretation and we will let the courts decide that as we move forward. I will leave it with something that's been going through my head a lot. There's a book called Soundtracks, one of my favorite authors, John Aka. Soundtracks is just really a word for the, the things that go through your head all the time, whether it's overthinking, over worrying, or the things that you think in your head constantly. And I am human. I have to tell you, these last few weeks, with the amount of emails and concerns and questions out of, now all of a sudden, the soundtrack that has been going through my mind is what I have heard from others. This will never end. No matter what you do, no matter how hard you try, they will continue to sue and there will continue to be a battle. That's a hard soundtrack for me lately to get through. And I just wanted to go on record to say, every day I wake up and try to change that soundtrack because it's the only way you can do it. And I now have to say every day and remind myself that I can't change the outcome. I can't change or prevent what people are going to do. Can't change what they're going to say, I can't change if they like it. All I'm committed to doing is every day thinking about what is the best option for this county. They may not like it, they may not want it, and I had one person at that meeting come up personally and say, are you going to listen to all these people in this meeting or are you going to vote with your heart? And my response was, I will vote based upon what's best for this county and what's going forward in the long term, not immediate. So it's just for my other fellow commissioners, as we go through those hardships and hard, hard times, we cannot be afraid to make a vote and do something out of fear. Fear gets a vote, I've said this before, it doesn't, it gets a voice, it does not get a vote. And so we are all in commitment to continue to move forward and do what we need to do properly for this county. So just wanted to share that because it's been on my mind. Thanks.
Commissioner Milburn. Commissioner Wolfson.
Yes, um, earlier in this meeting, it's brought up that negotiations are starting in the county. I'd like to mention, I've had more than one person.
Or is somebody, they can't hear, can you maybe speak into the microphone a little bit?
I thought it was. It came apparent earlier in this last meeting, I believe, that, um, negotiations are starting. And that brought to my attention that I'd like to share with the board. I have been approached by more than one person in the building that are uneasy about the method that we're going through this process. I know new ideas are hard to accept sometimes and we're probably doing it the way we've always done it. But perhaps the board should have or should put together a negotiating team from the board as opposed to the way we've always done it in the past. Throwing that out for thinking material.
Yes.
I guess I'm confused, we do have a negotiation team from the Board of Commissioners. You have your personnel committee, your personnel committee is made up of Chair Censor and Commissioner Russo.
Excuse me, excuse me, Madam Chair.
Yeah.
One more, please.
She asked to speak. She asked to speak, I told her she could.
We do have a negotiating committee, which is the personnel, which is Commissioner Russo and myself. And we are entering negotiations the week, the last week of this month. I don't, I can't remember the exact day, but that has been and is being continued to be scheduled. As far as the presentation at one o'clock, Mythbuster, it is basically a back history and what has been done from a certain, certain time point till now. That's what the presentation is on. Ownership of road ends, we are still waiting for some answers in order to clearly define the exact question that was asked. We've reached out and we have not heard back yet. And that was all the board comment that I had at this time.
Yes.
Since you brought up the Mythbusters, I wish we could have incorporated that into the regular board meeting. I, I appreciate the chair, uh, your responsibility of getting the word out, but I think in the future, we should consider maybe just doing that in the regular, incorporate in the regular board meeting. I think Mythbusters is confusing, it was confusing to me and it's probably confusing to the public. But I do appreciate your leadership in this, this matter.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'll add to the question about the road ends because that will also be in the Q and A that we've tried to document, we're trying to put together to get out there. That's not complete yet either, but it will be.
Okay.
So we'll add that into it.
With no further board comment, this meeting is adjourned. All in favor say aye. And the next one will begin at eleven fifteen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Morley.
Here.
Milburn.
Here.
Wolfson.
Here.
Censor.
Here.
Russo.
Approval of the agenda, before we approve the agenda, I would like to add board comment after the second public comment. Discussion. Roll call, eleven fifteen. Censor, yes. Wolfson.
Yes.
Morley.
Yes.
Milburn. Russo.
Off carry.
Public comment for agenda items only, is there any public comment for agenda item?
Is there any public comment for agenda items?
Mike, maybe you can hear me if I hold this up because we can't hear out there. That's my first agenda is maybe we'd like to hear what's going on. We didn't hear anything in the last meeting that I could hear. I have just one question and I don't know if you guys will even answer it, but how many of you live on the lake and are going to be subject to this new tax? I know you don't call it a tax. You call it an assessment. An assessment is a tax. I don't care what you say. I just wonder, are any of you lake owners? That's my biggest question.
During public comment, during actual public comment, we do not respond. We take note of your question.
Okay. I'm just wondering if it's a way to hide behind the microphone or, you know, not face the public in person.
Nope, it's in our board rules directly. If you'd like your question answered, you can email it to the Board of Commissioners, ask for it to be answered in a public meeting.
Okay. So I wanted to know. Thank you. That's one. Oh, that was the other question was you have public comments now and you have another one at the end. Because I've spoke now, will I be able to speak again if something? Okay.
Next commissioner, I can answer that question. Eric Ostergren again, since this is about Higgins Lake. You know, Benjamin Franklin said, "Half the truth is often a great lie." This saying underscores a crucial point, presenting only part of the truth can be just as misleading as telling an outright lie. As noted in, as noted in sources like PolitiFact, omitting essential information even if the remaining facts are accurate can distort perceptions and lead to false conclusions. Franklin's wisdom from Poor Richard's Almanac reminds us that partial truths can be deceptive and dangerous. Here's why half truths are particularly problematic. One, manipulation of perception by sharing only selected details, one can shape how others view a situation, potentially leading to misconceptions. Two, deception. The absence of relevant facts can serve as a form of deceit, even if the included information is true. Three, erosion of trust. Relying on half truths damages trust and credibility, revealing a willingness to mislead without resorting to outright falsehoods. Why this lesson and half truth, why is this lesson, half truths essential? Your attorney, Stacy Hissong, has demonstrated a concerning pattern of presenting half truths. We've outlined them in the past and during your August 6 meeting, there were so many instances I lost count. I'm not alone in believing that. Many people come, came up to me after the meeting and said the same thing. I initially believed the meeting was being recorded, but it appears it was not. If it would have been recorded, which is a continuing pattern of non-transparency, I would have outlined them here today. Her actions have begun to undermine both your integrity and the public's trust in this commission. I urge you to reconsider her role in representing this body. Commissioner Morley mentioned earlier that she has a problem with soundtracks, that the issues on Higgins will never end. There's a simple resolution. Fix the problem. Produce some results. So far, the results are very, very limited. And just this last week, over the last six years, something finally was done and it's very limited. The reason this has been going on for years and years, and it seems that it never ends, is because this board isn't getting results. Results. Transparency. This board has consistently emphasized the importance of transparency in its operations and communications, however, it is with great concern that I address the scheduled meeting coming up at 1:00 conveyed with the agenda labeled "Lake Level Presentation Mythbusters." The term Mythbusters clearly lacks any specificity, leaving the public in a state of uncertainty regarding the subject matter to be discussed and why it wasn't covered in the regular lake level meeting, this one right now. I have no idea what it's about and I'm sure the public doesn't either. Under the provision of the Open Meetings Act, it is imperative that all agenda items be articulated with sufficient detail to ensure that the public is adequately informed and able to engage in meaningful and in the democratic process. The failure to provide a comprehensive description of the agenda item in question constitutes a potential violation of the OMA, as it undermines the public's right to receive proper notice of the matters to be deliberated. Therefore, I formally object to the conveying of this upcoming meeting at 1:00 and its current form. I respectfully request that the board reschedule the meeting until such a time as it can furnish the public with a clear and detailed description of the agenda item. This will enable the community to prepare for the discussion and participate fully. Proceeding without adhering to these requirements would not only compromise the spirit of transparency, but it could also constitute a breach of the Open Meetings Act, which is designed to uphold public participation and accountability in governmental proceedings. Thank you very much.
Any other public comment on agenda items?
I'd like to follow that.
Come on up, state your name, speak into the mic.
Hey, Cotterman, Holton Lake. Guess I've brought some stuff. And again, Holton Lake's on the agenda and I'm from Holton Lake. I don't know if this is a, an agenda, an item or not. I don't know what the agenda is. Delegated authority update. And again, this Mythbusters meeting, I agree with Eric. I don't know what it's about. Not a clue. Transparency. Wide-scale flooding this spring and Prine Nuhoff went up to the judge and said they didn't find any. I've got numerous pictures and I sent it to two of you. Again, widespread flooding. I sent the pictures to the court. Attached that picture, it said, this is the Bayview, Holton Lake Dam was 6.6 inches above. Bayview Marina was 10.68 inches above. The day after the picture was taken, Holton Lake Dam was five inches above legal level. Bayview Marina was 11.28 inches above. That's something else. Maybe I lost it already. I lose stuff all the time. Oh, here it is. The importance of the East Bay Gage, right now, we're not getting the data. It's online. We're paying for it. If you have the right password, you can access the East Bay data. I know probably each and every one of you can do that. This is Saturday, August 9th, lake level 1138.1. Giving out data as we speak. I'm paying for it, but you deny us access to it. And again, the court case, they said we didn't have a floodplain elevation and I'm sure you have a copy of this by now, we have floodplain elevation for all three lakes. And Holton Lake, we have people that actually are enrolled in the insurance program. They got flood insurance. And again, the, the need for the, the need for East Bay is, this is a Sasech effect. Okay, in 2024, Holton Lake saw a nine-inch Sasech effect caused by a 30 mile an hour wind. And we have the two reporting stations. We know what the Sasech effect is. The lake can be nine inches higher on one end of the lake where I live than it is up at the west end of the lake. I live in East Bay. Having the East Bay Gage is, is truly important to us. And again, it's reporting. Here's a East Bay Gage. This was April 29th, 2025. We have a Sasech event here. Let's see, it was, lake level was 1139.3, legal lake level 1137.7. That's all in 88 datum. We were 19.2 inches above legal level on April 29th. Chairman Censor, I'll give this copy to you. My, my figures are right. Last thing, a couple of times I've stopped by Old 27. They have a, they have a manual reporting gauge there. It's a manual, non-reporting gauge, excuse me. And you can look over and you can read the numbers. And when I read this manual gauge off the, off the Old 27, it matches the same elevation as the one at the dam. The problem is, one at the bridge is 88 datum and the one at your dam site is 29 datum. This is a communication from, oh, what's, what's his name? Ed? Ed Lipinski? He's from the USGS. Communication from him, he says, "I'm not sure how this report is generating the numbers. It should be used in 29 datum, blah, blah, blah. How do I get this report sent to me? I would like to ask the person a few questions. I'm not familiar with this report." He doesn't know how these numbers are being generated. He works for USGS. Seems like he would know daterums and lake level things. Again, the flooding at Holton Lake. I live in a flood zone.
I miss out.
I miss out? Okay.
The bell winner.
And I can pick it up. Thank you so much. I'll put this in order and give it to Darlene if you would like, Darlene.
Sure.
Is there any other public comment on agenda items? Holton Lake update. Prine Nuhoff has supplied us with a timeline to try to keep on track at the Holton Lake structure through the design phase. There will be scheduled Eagle meetings between them and Eagle for the pre-application. I know the pre-application was filed and when I know more about the meeting and what it's going to entail, I will give an update on that. I had a meeting with Prine Nuhoff along with the lake manager and Commissioner Wolfson to go over options that might be available to us regarding the type of structure that Holton Lake might be looking at. There will be an advisory board meeting scheduled to go over what was said in that meeting and to gather input prior to reporting back to the entire board. There was a gate having an issue out at the structure. The lake manager discovered this yesterday and is supposed to be out there today looking at options and how to get it fixed. Commissioner Wolfson may have more about that. And continuing to work with Hi-Fi and getting the back data and everything up on the lake levels website. I do believe the last time I looked at the lake levels website, the Bayview Harbor is on there. Or Marina is on there. Commissioner Wolfson, did you have any more about the gate issue out at?
Yeah, Chase contacted me yesterday and sent me a picture of it. And we discussed it, and this is the gate that lets water down the Muskegon River all the time, a seven-foot gate, he said. He said it was vibrating vigorously. And in discussion with him, it came out that this appears to be plywood with a metal frame around it. And I suggested him that possibly one of the corner welds had broken and setting up that vibration, so he's going to pull it out and inspect it.
Lake St. Helen. Commissioner Wolfson, would you like to give an update on that?
Spicers was going to be here, but things went awry for him. So he emailed me the progress that's been taking place on St. Helen. Things that have been completed is topographical survey, drafted existing conditions plans, flow requests were sent to Eagle since the existing flow requests were outdated. Developed a rating curve for existing conditions for high and low tailwater conditions. Updated existing conditions plans to include plan and profile. Prepared draft sizing for proposed structure. Final sizing to be updated with Eagle flow rates when they're received. Preliminary sizing for bypass to flux, to facilitate construction. In other words, how they're going to handle the stream while they're constructing it. I think at one point, we're going to have to submit to the court to do away with winter level on that lake to, because the structure we're going to, we're proposing to put up is just a fixed height structure. In other words, a spillway. And Eagle has, up to this point, as far as I know, been really liked that idea on that lake and so, but we do probably have to at one point go to the courts and ask that the winter level be removed. And that's it on that one.
Higgins Lake. Continuing work on the methodology for the assessment role is taking place. We've been trying to utilize constant contact to send out public information about what is happening. Court of Appeals case, which was heard on August 6th, we are awaiting a decision. Hopefully, it'll be back within the next couple of months. There was an informational meeting that took place on August 6th as well. I was not able to attend due to a prior obligation, but thank you to all, everybody that was able to, all the other commissioners that were able to. The SAD map on the lake levels website is supposed to be updated with proposed assessments for the parcels by Monday, August 18th. We've been spending lots of hours logging phone calls and emails in regards to the assessments. The permit was approved on August 7th. We immediately scheduled for the placement of the riprap in strict accordance with the permit. This was done on Monday, August 11th. Hours were spent gathering information and putting together the presentation that is later today. Letter and F and Q will be entering the mail this week to all parcels in the SAD. And that's all that I have unless Commissioner Wolfson has some additional.
Yes, I think make comment on the permit that came through for the stones to be replaced in the spillway. On the 21st of July, I sat next to Rob Palareto, who is a representative from Senator Haddinger's office, and I spoke to him on that issue. That was on the 21st. On the 24th, he responded with a phone call and an email as to the status of that permit. So I'd like to publicly thank him for any help that he was involved with.
Anybody else have anything that they want to share as far as delegated update on Higgins? Unfinished business, we don't have any new business. Russ Cunningham County Treasurer's Office, assignment of additional duties, the SAD role in maintenance. We were all given the proposed contract from the Treasurer's Office. This will be for all three of the SAD lakes. The Treasurer's Office has the ability to keep track of all the combination splits that take place. They have the ability to take the payments, look at payoff amounts, et cetera. I feel that the amount that is requested is very fair for the amount of work that will be done, especially seeing as we have three lakes and assessments and possible upcoming assessments and structures that will need to be either repaired, modified, or replaced. I would like to add this to our next. I would like to add this to our next regular meeting for a vote, if we have support to do so. Just as long as everybody, just to move it forward. That will be on the next. Okay, motions and resolutions, none. So we're back to public comment.
I never did give you my name. My name is Ken Cofton. I'm on the East Bay of Houghton Lake. My parents had that for 75 years. I inherited it about six years ago. Just so you know, I've been up here. I've seen all the stuff going on. And my biggest thing for anybody like this, and I don't blame you specifically, but why is it every frickin' government office waits till there's a fire and then they come on, "Oh, we got to fix this. Let's go to the homeowners on the lake and charge them." We're not going to charge everybody coming up here for the bass fishing tournaments and they're taking all the fish we pay for. I know the DNR pays some, but who pays the DNR? Us. At the meeting I went to when you first talked about $300 per year, oh, no, $300 tax, you called it an assessment. I asked the girl, the lawyer that was there presenting this. She's saying, "Oh, all the townships are going to pay for any frontage they have on the lake. The DNR is going to pay for all their frontage." And I raised my hand, I says, "Well, we pay them. They don't have any money, so you're charging us for them too." So now, here we are. I know we're going to get hit with something. And I was in yesterday speaking to the girls in the office. They were very cordial, and I appreciate them. But I asked, "How much are we going to get hit for?" They said it's coming in December. So I'm just wondering, are we going to have to wait for Christmas to find out so everybody's broke at Christmas? I don't have tons of money to be putting into all this stuff. So I'd like to know. What are you talking about? Do you guys know? Or is that something else you can't answer?
You're on Houghton Lake?
I'm on Houghton. It's going to be, you know, figured out. Does everybody pay the same per lot? Is it by this footage on the frontage? Or is that another question that can't be answered? Apparently, no answer means that. The money that we've already paid in, who oversees that? Who watches over the money? Again, we don't get an answer because you can't answer? Silence treatment? You know, I have the house on Holly Drive over in the East Bay. But I also built a house over on Iroquois for my friend. And, you know, it's ridiculous. All the people that use the lake, and you guys come to the lake owners. The whole country can come to our lake. The fishermen come in, and I could tell you one thing that I don't like about that. They come right up behind my dock where my pontoon sits and they cast. I got a big hole in the seat where one of their hooks hooked the seat. These are the kind of things we put up with. And then you make us pay for them to be able to come in and do it. You know, in my opinion, and this is only my opinion, you know, you can't do anything with it. Why don't we shut down the access to the lake? If we have to pay for it, why doesn't it belong to us? You know, you guys let everybody come up here and it supports the businesses. And I remember back when I was building Iroquois, they had a tax. And all the people went on Facebook and told everybody, "Vote for this. The non-homesteaders have to pay for it." You know what we did? And I got a ton of people to do it. We started bringing all our groceries with us. We quit eating out at Houghton Lake. We started going to Cadillac or West Branch. So, you know, there's more than one way to skin a cat. And I'm not blaming you for that vote. And I know you guys may not even have been around when those things happened. But I'll tell you one thing. I don't have long to live. And I would like to see the dam fixed, but I would like to know what cost before we get slammed with it like they are over at Smallwood Lake and all the rest of them. My buddy's over on Smallwood. His assessment is $10,000 over his taxes for the next 20, 25 years, whatever it is. And, you know, you guys don't realize that if you're not on the lake, it's easy to pass stuff for us to pay for. And my minutes are probably getting close. But I'm frustrated. I had the same thing down in Madison Heights, Michigan, with the school boards. The schools were falling apart. What did they do? They let it fall apart till it was so broke they came to the homeowners. "You got to pay for this." Well, we got rid of that superintendent. And I went up to the board and I told them, "You know, you guys, if you were in private business, you'd all be fired because you have to prepare for this stuff ahead of time. And I know you guys weren't probably here when all this began happening. And there was no plan for it all these years." And I think it's ridiculous. If you're on a board, you should be responsible to the citizens. I'm not homesteaded, by the way. And that's what really pisses me off, is I don't get a vote on any of this stuff. And I think you guys need to think about the people who are paying for this.
Thanks for your call.
Thank you.
And hey, I appreciate you talking louder. I could hear you good.
Any other public comment?
I can type faster and I can read. I can't read my writing if I scratch it in, you know. Eric Osterman again. Seems that we owe a debt of gratitude to the Senator that Rex just mentioned to help us get the rocks in place. So we certainly owe him. We certainly shouldn't have to do that, though. But something that Rex got the job done, it seems to me, in getting the rocks done. That's all I'm asking this board. Get the job done. Okay? Go do what it has to do. Don't sit on your hands and say, "Oh, there's nothing I can do. It's just terrible." Get the job done. Can't just throw your hands up in the air. And I appreciate the frustration. We're frustrated also. You guys might be frustrated that we keep taking you to court. It's the only redress we have. I believe it's the First Amendment that allows us to do that. So complaining about us, complaining about you guys not doing your job isn't getting us anywhere. Let's team up. Let's start talking and communicating, okay? Not being ticked off and shutting the door, okay? Let's all get together. We can work with you guys. We can. Start talking to us, start working with us instead of seeing us in court. We'll get a lot more accomplished. We are not your enemy. It's Eagle. They're the ones we got to go after. And I know you guys don't like going after a government agency, but sooner or later, you're going to have to because the court's going to require you guys to get the lake levels up. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Mine up.
Rick Goddard, Houghton Lake. Just real quick, again, for me, it's all about the flooding. And you raise the lake level. Of course, you didn't come out and say, "We're going to raise the lake level, what, four tenths, close to five inches? We're going to call it an operations manual." Again, this transparency. Why didn't you tell people what you intended to do? Again, I have a picture of the flooding. This was off Iroquois, and it was a sage event. And I think Darlene said that the East Bay may be accessible now. Is that maybe? I'll check. Maybe you redid the page. Anyway, my shoreline now, I'm back to rocks. I got a seawall that's been undermined. And I put the big rocks there to keep the ice from going underneath it. Last year, of course, I had six foot of sand at a sandy beach. When we bought the property in the '50s, we had a sandy beach. Our subdivision was called Sandy Shores Subdivision. We had three birch trees. And my property was called Birch Point at Houghton Lake. It's on the plat map. Of course, those trees are all gone. They've been eroded away. Houghton Lake's almost surrounded entirely with flood walls now. You have to have a flood wall if you live on Houghton Lake because we're at flood stage every three to five years. And you think it's proper to raise the lake level. I think we all know how deadly floods can be. You see it on the news. I think Houghton Lake is probably the deadliest inland lake in Michigan. I looked through my records and I come up with 14 drownings. And I'm sure there's more than that. And most of these drownings, I believe, you can attribute to the higher lake levels, your bank water, and of course, the sage effect, the wind-driven tides. These wind-driven tides, for swimmers, or for boaters, or for ice fishermen, plays a huge role. Wintertime drownings, if you look, you can see the sage effect on the USG gauge. As the lake flushes from one side to the other, these currents, they, of course, erode the lake. And you can go out ice fishing one day and come back the next, and you're in open water. It's happened to me twice. Same path, same area, but this lead opened up. And you go swimming. Again, sage effect, wind-driven tides, storm surge. This happens on Houghton Lake. People should know about it. And East Bay is a means to describe it. Again, nine inches of sage effect was reported last year. That's a lot of water moving from one side of the lake to the other. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Board comment. Commissioner Morley.
I will answer one of the gentleman's questions. I live on the lake, so I understand what's going on. On all fronts, on all arguments, I understand those. So yes, I do live on the lake, to answer your question. And then I'm good, I'll save till our 1 o'clock.
Yeah, I added it.
That I lived on the lake?
Comment after that I didn't hear.
He was asking about my frustrations. And I said, "I understand the frustrations on all levels, every side of the argument, not just those who live on the lake."
I'll piggyback off Kim's comments from last meeting. This board isn't, we're not scripted. I know Rex because I work here. I know Darlene because I work here. I know Dave because I work here, and I know Kim. This is the finest board I've had the chance to work with in the last 20-some years. This is a great group of people. They are, their integrity and honor should never be challenged. I don't think anybody is, but I just want to say that. The kicker is, is that when I hear Eric and I hear some of the comments, you know, he mentioned clean and detailed, this meeting at 1 o'clock, I mentioned last meeting, I would recommend to the chair. And she's got a tough job. It's easy to originate. It's easy to complain but hard to originate. I would ask the chairman to consider not having the meeting at 1 o'clock. The reason being is that I'm not sure what Mythbusters would incur. I would rather just have us discuss it now so it would be out of the way. I feel it's ambiguous, and I feel that we should just either discuss it now or cancel the meeting at 1 o'clock. But again, Chairman Censor does a tremendous job. And I'm not trying to glaze using a new term that's probably not familiar with most people in here. She works her butt off, and she deserves a lot of credit for this, and so does Rex. But anyway, my recommendation to the chair, maybe the chair would like to take a quick break, but my recommendation would not to have the meeting at 1 o'clock. Either discuss it now or not have it now or discuss in two weeks. That's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Russo. Commissioner Wolfson.
Yes, I'd like to speak about the frustration some of our constituents and the...
Speak up. You want to trade mics?
I'd like to address the frustrations that some of our people have. People that live here and people that have second homes here. I attended this August 6th meeting. And I picked up from that meeting, there was two issues that we could have addressed, and we didn't, we failed in that respect, that was of a big concern for the people. One was, what is the cost of the project? I feel we could have gave them some kind of an idea of what the worst-case scenario would be. And also, there was some concern about no plan being forth to them about how we're going to continue. Now, I think at the 1 o'clock meeting, we addressed the plan issue. But, you know, maybe we need to have more dialogue with them sometimes? Maybe that would help? It's just my comment.
First, I'd like to thank Jody for all the help in gathering information that was needed. I'd also like to thank Chase for doing legwork on certain data that was needed. Also for getting riprap taken care of so quickly. Commissioner Morley, thank you for all the time that you have spent in the preparation for the informational meeting. I can't even begin to tell you the amount of hours that it takes to get things in order and in line. As far as the 1 o'clock meeting, this is not new, people. We have discussed this in meetings. We have discussed what it was going to be about. So I don't understand. I understand if you weren't in the audience, maybe didn't hear some of those discussions, but the discussions did take place here at this table, more than once. The meeting is happening at 1 o'clock today.
Chairman?
Yes.
I understand where, you know, Commissioner Milburn is saying that maybe that should have been postponed. However, all media was alerted. TV, everybody has been alerted to that meeting. I don't know if they'll show, but to cancel now and ask those people to be here, I think is last minute. Maybe we should have did a better title to it in your agenda. But we all did know that we were preparing to do a meeting that showed everything that we have done and what we know in the history. Because there's a lot of people out there that only hear one voice, and then they're confused. "Well, I heard this, but then so-and-so told me that." So we just wanted to do this in one lump sum, not trying to go back and go, "I think that was said at one other meeting." This is just a chance to level set and start. Here it is up until this point. Will there be more? I anticipate there will be. But at this point in the juncture, I am not for rescheduling it since this has been discussed. And we've already invited all the media. That's my take.
My concern was with the title, Mythbusters. I think it's ambiguous. I hear what you're saying. I get the frustration level because I'm here too. But I think Mythbusters was an odd title.
If there's no further comment, this meeting is adjourned, and the next meeting will be at 1 o'clock. Lake Level Presentation, August 13th at 1:00 p.m.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Censor. Here.
Milburn.
Here.
Wolfson.
Here.
Morley.
Here.
Russo.
Here.
Approval of the agenda. Before we approve the agenda, I would like to add board comment after the second public comment. Do I have a motion?
I'm going to accept the agenda without addition.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Roll call? Milburn.
No.
Russo.
Yes.
Yes.
Morley.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Motion carried. Public comment for agenda items only. Is there any public comment for agenda items?
Eric Ostergren, former commissioner, backlotter on Higgins Lake. I'm here to address a significant issue regarding the maintenance of the high water, of the legal water levels on Higgins Lake as mandated by the declaratory judgment from Judge Bennett on May 7th, 2004, 2024. It's been over 15 months since that ruling, and we will be filing a show cause hearing against this commission shortly due to its failure to meet those legal obligations. As of yesterday, August 12th, the water levels on Higgins were reported to be 3.48 inches below legal level, well below the legal threshold. While I appreciate the recent steps taken to obtain a permit for replacing the rocks that were illegally removed in 2014, this feels like a insufficient response to the urgent needs still present. On March 10th, 2023, the Michigan Supreme Court denied this county's appeal from the Court of Appeals ruling, which clearly stated that the county had a duty to maintain the legal levels on Higgins Lake. Seven months later, on October 3rd, 2023, this, the commission took a positive step by having Luke O'Brien from the Spicer Group produce a webinar that's available on your website. I know it must have caught, cost a substantial amount to have you produce it for him. In that webinar, he outlined several recommendations for improving the dam and enhancing the delegated authority's ability to manage lake levels. Unfortunately, it appears that none of these recommendations have been addressed over the past two years. To reiterate, Luke O'Brien's recommendations included constructing a concrete apron, replacing and improving the sheet pile wall, conducting additional engineering evaluations, installing a restrictor plate for the unregulated flow, flow channel, replacing stop logs with fabricated inserts to minimize leakage, leakage. Additionally, the operational action items produced by Luke included automated, automating tilting, weir lake, weir gates and record keeping, increasing the height of the sheet pile and the gates to reduce water, water loss from waves, modifying the low flow notch for better metering. Luke emphasized that these recommendations were in addition to those made by Spicer back in 2010. Regrettably, it seems that none of these critical recommendations have been acted upon. The commission's inaction, despite clear guidance and legal obligations, has left us in a precarious situation. One of the options Luke mentioned that you, was that you could do nothing, but that option was eliminated on May 7th, 2024, when the court reaffirmed that this commission had a duty to maintain the water levels on Higgins Lake. The lack of action in response to the declaratory judgment and the recommendations from Spicer raises concerns that will now need to be addressed in court. However, there's a significant opportunity for positive change. In Chairwoman Censor's recent email, she mentioned that we're all in this together, yet that does not seem to be the case. Your refusal to communicate with us suggests that we are viewed as adversaries rather than constituents or partners. This approach is misguided and fosters an adversarial relationship with us, your constituents reflecting poor legal advice. Instead of excluding those involved in legal actions from the Lake Advisory Board, you should be encouraging their participation as stakeholders. I urge you to reconsider this stance. Collaborating with us can help mitigate further legal complications. Eagle is the true adversary here. I encourage you to find the courage to stand up to Eagle rather than against your constituents. I also urge this commission to file for permits with Eagle to repair and modify the LLCs as recommended by Luke O'Brien. If Eagle denies these requests, you will be better positions to, better positioned to demonstrate to the court that you are actively fulfilling your responsibilities to the community and the court order. In other words, you need to embrace the suck, which means accepting and enduring difficult situations rather than resisting them. It's about acknowledging hardship and finding a way to persevere, often to achieve a larger objective. This phrase, commonly used in military contexts, applies to any situation requiring endurance through discomfort. So, let's embrace the suck and work together toward a substantial solution for Higgins Lake. I look forward to further dialogue in that regards. Finally, I hope you get back, I hope you all get back and review the October 20, 2023 webinar, including the monologue that Luke O'Brien presented to this commission. It's on your website, and I hope you start thinking about how you can temporarily restore the lake levels before a permanent structure can be properly designed and built. Installing the rocks in the stream bed as they start, but much more needs to be done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other public comment on agenda items? Before we begin the presentation, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the tremendous amount of hard work from Commissioner Morley, our Controller, Administrator, and myself that we have invested in meticulously reviewing years of meeting minutes. This invaluable knowledge and insight gathered throughout my time as commissioner has accumulated in a presentation that not only shows a timeline of events of our past, but also paints a hopeful picture for the future. By reflecting on our past, we can better understand our current initiatives and the positive trajectory that we are striving to achieve. Andy's supposed to make that bigger. There we go. So, we're going to start with the history. We all know that the 1982 court order for Higgins Lake, the summer level is 1154.11, and that's in the 29 NVGD. The winter level is 1153.61, which is also in the 29 NVGD. We do realize that the 88 is now recognized as a standard measurement by the engineers, Eagle, as well as USGS. Hi-Fi, who we use to monitor our control structures, uses the 29, which was used in the original court ordered language. This board has chosen to use the NVGD 29 to ensure consistent monitoring and messaging of the lake level data. Lake St. Helen, same summer level is at 1155.25, winter is 1154.75. Houghton Lake is 1138.1, winter level is 1137.6. So, a calculation with the 29 datum. If you have a legal level of 1154.11, and you get a daily reading of 1153.85, the difference is .26. You multiply that by 12, and it'll tell you how many inches you are above or below. In this case, it would be 3.12 inches below. This datum is very simple to calculate, which is why we continue to use it. The biggest thing is, you cannot mix the two datums at all, or you are not going to get the correct configurations.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Could I mention that regardless of which datum you use, it does not change the lake level?
You are correct. Higgins Lake has a gauge, one at the control structure, control structure currently using, it was installed in March 2024 by Hi-Fi. There was a second gauge that was placed on Earl Avenue, the North Higgins Lake, that was set up in September of 2024. By October 2024, the censor could no longer read accurately due to the low water level. Gauge 3 was placed on Sunflower Drive, South Higgins Lake, set up in September of 2024. By October 24, 2024, the censor could no longer read accurately due to the low water levels. Gauge 4 near Phoenix Park was set in April of '24. May 2024, it was shut down. From my understanding, this was because it was actually on a piece of property that was private and not at the road end where we thought that the road commission owned the property. September 2024, it was relocated to Phoenix Park West, and by January of 2025, it was offline, and it had been discovered that ice had taken out the gauge. Hi-Fi came in April of 2025 to remove it due to the damage. So, currently, you have one Hi-Fi gauge located on Higgins Lake, which is located at the control structure. You also have a USGS gauge, thanks to the Higgins Lake Foundation, who currently paid to keep that online and who has offered to do so again. Those are the pictures at the control structure. Lake St. Helen has one gauge at the control structure, which is currently being used, and that was installed in March of '24. Houghton Lake has a gauge at the control structure, which is currently being used to read the legal levels of Houghton Lake, and that was installed in March of 2024. Gauge 2 by Bayview Marina, which was installed for informational purposes only, and that was installed in April of 2024. There is a gauge 3 on the Muskegon River, closest to the structure, that Prine and Newhoff is using for informational purposes. It was installed in May of 2025. And a gauge 4 on the Muskegon River, which is farthest from the structure, being used by Prine and Newhoff for informational purposes only, which was also installed in May of Those are the photos at the control structure and at the marina, and that is the one closest to the structure on the Muskegon River. Act 451 of 1994, Part 307, Inland Lakes, 324.30711, states, "The county board may determine by resolution that the whole or part of the cost of a project to establish and maintain a normal lake level for an inland lake shall be defrayed by special assessments." 324.30712 states, "Expenses allowed to be billed to the SAD include studies, surveys, preparation of assessment roles, engineers, as well as legal fees and court costs for work on projects." This part of the act is interpreted in a variety of different ways. There is current litigation going on with the appeal of the SAD. Therefore, we will not discuss this in greater detail until we get a ruling from the Court of Appeals. So, in 2029 is where we kind of decided to start. The HLPOA requested the Board of Commissioners at that time to file for a temporary fluctuation allowing for an earlier and lower winter drawdown. 2010, an echo hydraulic evaluation of removing the Higgins Lake, Lake Level Control Structure was performed. It was published and put online in 2016 and can be found at the link. The water level, some of the conclusions from this was, the water level could drop substantially once the structure was removed. Higgins Lake Land Conservancy asked the Higgins Lake community to contribute to the effort of preserving the dam and maintaining the court ordered legal levels. In 2010, a Higgins Lake Dam Committee was formed. This was not a formal committee from the Board of Commissioners. It included the following, Ken Melvin, analyst, Fred Okenbar, okay, Herb Weatherly, Rick Meeks, Frank Homola, and Rick Federro. Some of the key points from their meeting minutes and some of the following questions were asked. How much water is needed in the Cut River? What can be done to restrict the five-foot opening legally? We would need to hire a professional dam firm. The Higgins Lake Dam Committee asked the DNR Dam Control and Fisheries to attend the April meeting to discuss the following. What are the minimum flow requirements by the DNR and Fisheries? A survey about how much flow is going through the five-foot opening? The DNR questioned why the dam was there at all. You would have wider beaches. It was built for all kinds of crazy reasons. Is it really healthy for the lake? I recommend no structure. What would happen to the Cut River? Wouldn't it dry up? A response from the DNR was, so what? Do nothing until we have a study. Be aggressive, draw a template, let Mother Nature take its course. If the dam comes out, what about recreational use? If it's not, it's not there to make it convenient. We could authorize the chair to contract with Spicer Group, but what is our goal? Be proactive. The level has been too high for too long. We have gotten closer to the legal level in recent years. What is the greatest benefit to the lake? Shouldn't that be our focus? A study would be costly, according to the Spicer Group. We would need experts, scientists, biologists, and engineers, and it would take years to accomplish. There are pictures of the dam in the 20s and 30s. Comments were made that it was built for convenience, but problems have been around for decades. We had a malfunction of a flop gate, and that summer, we were closer to the legal level, although the data looked bad. We want a lower level, to stop erosion, to stop losing trees. The lake needs to cleanse itself. These were some of those comments. Erosion is more than water lapping on shore and heavy winds. Concrete seawalls can't be used. Riprap is the product now. When we get serious about removing the dam, we will have to go door to door. Questions on whether everyone would be okay with this were brought up. Put together a proposal to see what everyone wants. We must prioritize what is best for the lake. People will adapt to whatever we come up with here. Come up with a matrix. Prioritize, weigh, come up with answers. Fishing, boating, erosion, visions are very different. Functionality of the dam is okay, but the operation is very different. November of 2011, the temporary fluctuation ended and the original lake level order was reinstated. We'll fast forward now to 2019. In January of 2019, a meeting was requested to be scheduled with DEQ representatives to discuss the necessity for a restrictor plate, watershed flow, economic and environmental impacts, and possible alternatives. If the Board of Commissioners decide to make changes, it would require a motion. In March of 2019, 2019, a meeting with the DEQ took place. Eric Ostergren filed a lawsuit against the Board of Commissioners at that time to maintain Higgins Lake legal levels. It was dismissed for lack of standing, as he was not a lakefront property owner. So, I can understand why Mr. Ostergren is frustrated. I'm frustrated, and it's only been three and a half years that I've been looking at this. Board of Commissioners passed a motion to acknowledge Part 307 of PA 45, requiring a petition of two-thirds of the owners of the land abutting the lake prior to considering any changes to lake levels and a cash payment from petitioners to cover the cost of a preliminary study, or $10,000, whichever was less. In October 2019, Eric Ostergren informed Citizens for Higgins Lake Legal Levels, CHIL, and filed in Circuit Court to compel the Board of Commissioners to maintain the legal levels. March 2020, CHIL versus the rest of, CHIL versus Roscommon hearing was set. July 2020, CHIL versus Roscommon, Circuit Court dismissed. Expectation of appeal to a higher court. February 2021, Court of Appeals agrees to hear the CHIL case. May 2021, the appellate brief was filed, waiting for plaintiff to reply. Sheriff Department investigating the tampering of the Higgins Lake, Lake Level Control Structure. September 2021, CHIL versus Roscommon, brief filings complete, waiting on decision or a hearing date. In November 2021, the Lake Level Special Assessment District meetings were scheduled with the attorney. In December 2021- In December 2021, a planning meeting occurred regarding the creation of all three special assessment districts. March 2022, the Court of Appeals hearing date was set for March 9th, oral arguments. April 2022, the Court of Appeals overturned the Circuit Court decision, saying no fluctuation is allowed. The Board of Commissioners agreed to appeal to the Supreme Court regarding the Court of Appeals' decision. In May 2022, CHIL versus Roscommon, the Board of Commissioners filed for an appeal to the Michigan Supreme Court. Oversight for Higgins Lake level was given to the Board of Commissioners Chair and Vice Chair, which was Schneider and Commissioner Russo at the time. July 2022, the Supreme Court accepted the Board of Commissioners filing. December 2022, it was the last meeting of the old board. The Controller was appointed as a delegated authority by the Board of Commissioners. A resolution was passed to establish an SAD for each lake. The Supreme Court accepted briefs and approval for the Houghton Lake, lake level study. January 2023, a new Board of Commissioners included Commissioner Milburn, Ostergan, Russo, Censor, and Wolfson. Lake St. Helen Spicer Group completed a preliminary study of access. Higgins Lake began review of Platts and planning to meet regarding Platted access. Ostergan, hours after being sworn in, added a board to the Higgins Lake control structure. He believed he had the authority to do so. Ostergan questions the legal actions of a delegated authority. The Board of Commissioners met with the attorney and confirmed the legal role of the delegated authority. The delegated authority was currently our controller, who was named by the prior board in the last meeting of December of 2022. In February 2023, Ostergan requested the Board of Commissioners to meet with Eagle. Commissioner Russo and Wolfson agreed to meet with Eagle regarding the scouring and a permit. Controller reports that the last action from the CHIL lawsuit was in July of 2022. March 20, March 2023, Russo reported that Eagle inspection in February showed no scouring. The requested was a written report, however, Eagle never gave a report. Spicer Group provided a cost estimate for Higgins Lake SAD boundary approval by the Circuit Court and preliminary improvements of the lake level control structure. The Spicer Group estimate cost was $66,000. Due to questions from special interest groups, the board decided to wait until the final approval of the SAD district. Ostergan suggested the Board of Commissioners wait until the ruling on the CHIL case. The HLPOA and the HLLC were not in favor of the special assessment district. The HLPOA offered to fund and control the work of the dam improvements, yet was not willing to assume the liability of it. Higgins Lake Land Conservancy offered to help fund any improvements to help maintain the legal level. Board of Commissioners remain committed to the goal that all lakes will be handled consistently and have a special assessment district. The Supreme Court declined to review the CHIL case and sent it back to the Circuit Court. Ostergan sent communications to Eagle, presented information regarding the investigation of who removed rocks from the Higgins Lake, lake level control structure. Current SAD projects, Houghton Lake bonding process was on hold. Data collection and public opinion survey were estimated to be 240,000. The board at that time made a resolution to hold off. On Lake St. Helen, the Board of Commissioners received an estimate for the creation of the SAD through the Circuit Court from the attorney. That estimate was 54,000. Higgins Lake, lake level, district township stakeholder meetings were held. The lake level letter and petition survey for Higgins Lake SAD boundaries was sent out. And May 2023 was the deadline for people to respond. April 2023, the Lake Level Management Committee was formed. Commissioner Wolfson and Censor were assigned. They had no ties to the previous lake conversations or actions. The Board of Commissioners actively sought to hire a delegated authority as a county employee. April 13th, Higgins Lake informational webinar was done. A status conference for CHIL was scheduled for July 20th. April 14th, special meeting. The Controller asked the Board of Commissioners to discuss amending the lake level orders to allow for a fluctuation. If it was done through the special assessment district process, it's less costly because it requires only one court appearance. Commissioner Ostergan reminded the Board of Commissioners of a prior Commissioner's resolution back in 2019 not to change levels without two-thirds petition. The Board of Commissioners decided not to amend at that time. Ostergan questions the Board of Commissioners legal costs for defending CHIL. Commissioner Censor explained that the attorney's bills clearly stated the amounts that the county had to pay. Most costs were being covered by MMRMA. May 2023, legal counsel confirmed that the Court of Appeals' decision applies to all inland lakes statewide. Lake levels must be maintained at the 1982 court order. Commissioner Ostergan requested a motion to halt all activities, expenditures, on the development of the SAD until current litigation is completed. That failed to pass two to three. A tentative action plan for all three lakes was presented and passed unanimously. Based on the report that there was no scouring, the Board of Commissioners asked the Controller to get an estimate from Spicer Group for a dam inspection. The estimate for the inspection was $1,200. Ostergan continues to question the cost to the county for the CHIL lawsuit. The Controller pointed out that the MMRMA, the insurance company, has been paying since 2020. Ostergan confirms that the Controller was correct. June 2023, petitions to establish Higgins Lake level boundaries sent to the Circuit Court. Lion Township presentation regarding Higgins Lake SAD, they had approximately 20 participants show. Waiting for the final schedule for the Girish Township presentation. Hearing for Higgins Lake SAD boundaries were scheduled for September. The Higgins Lake Property Owners Association initiates a flow rate measurement of the Cut River. They placed it approximately 100 feet downstream from County Road 100 Bridge. This area, the streambed, is relatively flat, and the river was approximately 36 feet wide. They, it was measured by using the Global Water COFP 111 Flow Meter. Eagle requires 50 cubic feet per second. June reading was estimated at 40 cubic feet per second. July 2023, Spicer Group inspection results for Higgins Lake. Structural recommendations. Continue to monitor stop log leakage was completed. Cut down brush trees near the shoreline. That was completed. The county took care of the brush. They contracted out the removal of the tree. Operational recommendations. Create a manual and process to operate the structure and consider automation. The low-flow notch is not effective. Consider modification. This will require an MDNR and Eagle approval. Increase the height of the sheet pile wall and increase the tilting of the wear gates. The Board of Commissioners advertised for a lake level manager. CHIL returned to the Circuit Court. Plaintiff was granted limited records from the state. Hearing date was set for September in 2023. The flow rate estimate for the month of July was at 37 cubic feet per second. August 2023, bids sent out for the delegated authority lake manager. This happened because, as an employee position, the rate was determined by wage and salary to pay $20.99 to $25.18 per hour. There were no accepted offers, and it had to go out for a contracted position instead. At that time, interviews conducted as a contracted position took place. The HLPOA flow rate estimated at 34 cubic feet per second. September 2023, the Higgins Lake SAD boundaries confirmed in Circuit Court. The SAD lawsuit filed by the HLPOA board in 20 additional residents. The Controller resigned as the delegated authority for Higgins Lake, and an updated tentative plan of action was presented by the Lake Level Committee and approved by the Board of Commissioners. In October 2023, Spicer Group provided a webinar on Higgins Lake engineering reports. The board was informed that Eagle may not approve the permit without a topographic survey with a cost estimate of $6,000. The Board of Commissioners sent a letter to HLPOA and HLLC recapping the recommendation, plan, and asking for funds. Higgins Lake Land Conservancy responded and offered to pay for the survey up to $6,000. They also offered to hire and pay Shepkey Consulting to assist in writing the, for the Eagle permit, and that was estimated at $3,000. The Higgins Lake Land Conservancy hired Prine and Newhoff and paid them directly $5,800 to do the elevation study. November 2023, pretrial for CHIL versus Roscommon. Plaintiffs and defendants agreed to mediate towards an agreement. The delegated authority developed an action plan for Higgins Lake and repairs for Houghton Lake, and Senate Bill 0662 was introduced. December 2023, Higgins Lake Land Conservancy voted to hire Shepkey Consulting to assist with the permit. The board passed a resolution naming Shepkey Consulting, Chase Shepkey, as the delegated authority for Higgins Lake. An appreciation letter went out to Chase Shepkey from the Board of Commissioners for his work with the Higgins Lake Land Conservancy, and an appreciation letter went out to the Higgins Lake Land Conservancy from the Board of Commissioners for their response to the needed survey. Senate Bill 0662 referred to committee on local government, and the Higgins Lake Foundation paid to continue to have the USGS gauge on Higgins Lake. January 2024, the Board of Commissioners started separate lake level meetings to keep regular meetings from overlapping the other board meetings and their work. The board continues to review the tentative plan, received cross-appellant briefs as submitted to the Court of Appeals regarding the SAD. In February 2024, Hi-Fi gave a presentation to the Board of Commissioners. Delegated Authority Shepkey stated that the geotechnical investigation was complete. They will apply for a permit, rocks, and spillway, and possibly raise height of flop gate and sheet piling. The Houghton Lake SAD public meeting was held. The Board of Commissioners held a special meeting to discuss the Houghton Lake apportionment and their factors. In March of 2024, Delegated Authority Shepkey Consulting gave an update on the Houghton Lake SAD costs. Went from an early estimate of $2 million down to a little over $1 million. This will be a three-year assessment and cover costs and maintenance from 2022 until the current year. There was continued Board of Commissioner talks regarding Hi-Fi. Special meetings to discuss alterations for the Higgins Lake control structure and the proposed permit. And the Board of Commissioner approves the delegated authority Shepkey to move forward with the permit for Higgins Lake. In April 2024, Delegated Authority Shepkey applied for the permit, asking for additional height to sheet pile, additional height to flop gates, new and additional logs to stop log bays, and additional four to eight inches of fieldstone or riprap. Delegated Authority updated that the USGS will stay online until September 30th of 2024. Two new gauges were added, and they should be up within the week. Site visit for the structure was recommended for May instead of the original lake level meeting, and the Circuit Court hearing plaintiffs requested for writ of mandamus. May 2024, the tour of the lake level control structure took place. Delegated Authority Shepkey pointed out that the water is spilling over. The permit would help maintain the legal level, keep water from spilling out from the boats, and reduce wave action loss. Eagle requested additional information. The delegated authority requested the ability to consult with an attorney on Eagle's request. The Board of Commissioners permitted the delegated authority to work over the Fourth of July to supply the additional drawing and that the permit and permit work to Eagle. Requesting to keep the USGS gauge on Higgins Lake was asked. In June of 2024, Delegated Authority Shepkey discusses options on what could be left off the permit to get it more, to get one more timely. Bob Frye from the Higgins Lake Land Conservancy shared a note with Commissioner Censor regarding the Eagle permit and funding. The Board of Commissioners commits $3,000 of the $6,000 estimated to move forward with the permit. The Land Conservancy pledges the other $3,000. Lake St. Helen public hearing was held. Delegated Authority Shepkey continues to work on getting the additional gauges on Higgins Lake and needs the approval from, of the road commission to do so. Delegated Authority working on the Lake Helen, Lake St. Helen rule indicates they are using similar factors as were used in Houghton Lake. July 2024, mediation for CHIL lawsuits. There was a full day here at the county building to show good faith and settle. Commissioner Wolfson, myself, Jody, and the attorney attended on behalf of the county. Shepkey Consulting submitted additional information to Eagle for the permit. Delegated Authority obtained the permits from the road commission work on installing all the Hi-Fi gauges. Below are photos that were submitted to Eagle out at the structure for the permit. We're continuing in on July. Those are additional photos that were submitted for information that Eagle was requiring. August 2024, Chase Shepkey resigns from Higgins Lake delegated authority due to a federal lawsuit. Eagle asked for all the permits to be done by a professional engineer. The Board of Commissioners evaluates options for the Higgins Lake delegated authority role and Lake St. Helen assessment role approved and bonding to move forward. In September 2024, CHIL amended the complaint to make it a class action for damages, attempting to add a constitutionality of the amendment to the lake level statute. CMAC at all, at all versus Roscommon County motion to dismiss was scheduled with Judge Luddington. Hearing was set for November 6th. The Board of Commissioner becomes the delegated authority for Higgins Lake. There was an offer of judgment for CHIL. October 2024, the Board of Commissioners closed session to discuss with the attorney the CHIL lawsuit. Commissioner Ostergan was not able to participate, as he was the main plaintiff. Federal lawsuit by Charles Wayne Brooks, Gregory CMAC, Bruce Carlton, after the state passage of PA 112 of 2024 stating it was illegal that the Commissioners colluded with legislator to pass the act. The board still maintains that that is not a true statement. Permit application was withdrawn because Eagle required a professional engineer to submit the drawings, supplied all details of the permit that were submitted to Eagle to the entire Board of Commissioners for further discussion and options on moving forward. October 23rd, there was a special meeting called. We reviewed the permit, determined what the end game would be, discussed temporary fixes, consult with dam safety, and determine what type of studies will need to be done. Decision was made to allow Prine and Newhoff to continue the process for initial permit. We apply separate permits for each item, starting with the riprap on the streambed. November of 2024, Prine and Newhoff quoted the Higgins Lake Land Conservancy for the professional engineering services to resubmit the permit. The Land Conservancy, Bob Frye, offered to split the cost of $8,000 with the Board of Commissioners. The Board of Commissioners discussed the offer by the Land Conservancy. Prine and Newhoff is also doing a study for the Houghton Lake at the same time, and the Board of Commissioners signed a contract with Prine and Newhoff to move forward with and the Board of Commissioners signed a contract with Prine and Newhoff to move forward with the permit. December of 2024, Prine and Newhoff started the permit process. The county received a check from the Land Conservancy for $6,500, started looking at setting up an advisory board. January 2025, we have a new Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Milburn, Morley, Russo, Censor, and Wolfson. Chair Censor asked Prine and Newhoff for updates. Applications were sent out for the Higgins Lake Advisory Committee. Eleven applications had been received. The Chill lawsuit is not closed out yet, waiting for some to still sign off. CMAC, Ross Common County, no new updates. Motion for dismissal has been filed, no response from the plaintiff. Also, CMAC versus Ross Common County, the Attorney General filed a notice of intervention in January, which was immediately objected to by the plaintiff's attorney. The court has yet to act on the intervention or objection, nor set a hearing date on a motion to dismiss. February 2025, motion made and carried to allow Prine and Newhoff to proceed with the permit submission to Eagle for the Higgins Lake control structure permit, request to return the low-flow channel to the original assumed elevations by placement of riprap. CMAC, Ross Common County, plaintiffs Greg CMAC, Bruce Carlton, and Charles Wayne Brooks filed an amended complaint on February 28th of 2025 to add the Ross Common County Drain Commissioner Chase Shepkey to the list of defendants. March 2025, communications with Prine and Newhoff and Chair Censor, asking how many more hoops will Eagle make us jump through? Chill versus Ross Common County, waiting for plaintiff's attorney to respond to inquiries regarding the two remaining plaintiff agreements to settlement. Suit remains open. Higgins Lake SAD, appeal originally filed in September 2023, no current movement in that case. CMAC, Ross Common County, the original assigned judge recused from the hearing as he is a lakefront property owner. Our attorney will be refiling a motion to dismiss and including the Drain Commissioner. The Attorney General's motion to intervene and plaintiff's motion to add claims against the state is scheduled for June 26th. April 2025, Chair Censor asked Prine and Newhoff for another update. Eagle had locked the permit in its under review. Ostrigan questions the Board of Commissioner's sense of urgency, even though Chair Censor has followed up on every single Eagle request. Chair Censor keeps the Higgins Lake Land Conservancy updated through the process, per Bob Frye. Censor working on a timeline. Higgins Lake SAD, Michigan Court of Appeals sent correspondence to 13 of the 37 cross-appellants who had not yet filed a cross-appeal. They have to file by April 22nd, or they will be involuntarily dismissed. Higgins Lake SAD, all missing cross-appellants have filed cross-appellant briefs stating they join and concur with the arguments and briefing submitted by the HLPOA. April 23rd, closed session with the attorney to review written legal opinion regarding amendments to the lake-level order for Higgins Lake. May 2025, the Board of Commissioners adopts Holton Lake Lake-Level Control Structure Operation Manual contingent upon the court approval. Shepkey resigns as the delegated authority for Lake St. Helen and Holton Lake. Chair Censor requests a bid from Prine and Newhoff for hydraulic analysis that was required by Eagle. Note, Eagle's requirements have been consistent with what was told to the Board six years ago. Higgins Lake SAD, the cross-appellants Mark O'Brien, Ann Quinn, Dennis Wood, and Donald Hayes are dismissed for having failed to file timely cross-appellant briefs. CMAC versus Ross Common renewed motion to dismiss. The first amended complaint in lieu of filing an answer was submitted on March 28th. Planners have also filed a motion for leave to file a second amended complaint, solely for the purpose of attempting to add the state of Michigan as a defendant. May 16th, Chair Censor and Commissioner Morley met with Senator Hortinga. Representative Borton was a no-show to discuss the challenges with Eagle and continue to provide updates and information. On May 20th, a special meeting to review the next steps for the delegated authority. Who will take charge of the emails, phone calls, and updating the website were discussed. Discussions of continuing on with the methodology. Oh, it didn't move, sorry. Nope. Yep. Discussion of continuing on the methodology, computation of costs and assessment role, and possible change in the language of the court order. Per Eagle request, the Higgins Lake permit was changed to an individual permit versus a maintenance permit. There was an additional fee of $500 and requires feedback from parcel owners adjacent to the structure. Chill versus Ross Common County, two plaintiffs remain in the case as they have yet to be requested as dismissed by the plaintiff's attorney. CMAC, Ross Common County, our motion to dismiss plaintiff's response in our reply brief in support of a motion to dismiss. The Michigan Attorney General's motion to intervene and plaintiff's motion for leave to file second amended complaint are all pending court review. May 30th, the Holton Lake hearing. The judge granted the Board of Commissioners to move forward with the operations manual and revisit it in two years once there's a new structure. June 2025, Eagle is requesting additional information for the permit. Tom Smith from Prine and Newhoff submitted what was needed. The Board of Commissioners continued discussion on the estimated cost for Higgins Lake SAD. Who will be handling the website, phone calls, and emails? It was decided Censor answered the phone calls and emails. Morley will also help with this. The IT department will take over the website. Resolution was proposed for the Higgins Lake SAD. Commissioner Morley continues talks with Senator Hortinga's office. Assignment of additional duties as lake-level manager to Drain Commissioner Chase Shepkey. And the advisory board will be put on pause until needed. We will go out for applications again in the future. Continuing on in June, special meeting voted to approve the Higgins Lake SAD resolution to create the assessment role that determines the methodology and computations of cost, or how much each parcel will be assessed. There was, oh, it's not changing on me, sorry. Assignment of additional duties as lake-level manager was assigned to the Drain Commissioner Chase Shepkey. Chill versus Ross Common County, our attorney has filed a motion to dismiss remaining plaintiffs as stipulations for case closure. Higgins Lake SAD, motion to file a supplemental brief on behalf of cross-appellant Charles Duhwitt Jr., an outstanding plaintiff, was granted. No date set for oral arguments. The appeal was originally filed in September of 2023. CMAC versus Ross Common County, presiding judge granted our motion to dismiss, dismissing the case without prejudice and denying the other pending motions between plaintiffs and the state of Michigan as moot. Planners have immediately filed a notice of appeal to the Sixth Circuit, U.S. Supreme Court of Appeals. July 2025, Chill versus Ross Common County, a hearing has been scheduled for August 14th. So if the plaintiff's attorney agrees with our request to settle, it can be resolved without the hearing. Higgins Lake SAD submitted on-case call for Court of Appeals, August 6th at 11:00 a.m. Accounts payable was finalized regarding the Higgins Lake SAD establishment and management. Communications with Prine and Newhoff regarding the permit and it being filed as a single permit, which is a $500 fee. Points of contact for all the lakes were discussed. Higgins Lake, Commissioner Morley would be the point of contact. Holton Lake, Commissioner Censor. Lake St. Helen, Commissioner Wolfson. July 23rd, closed session with the attorney for a written legal opinion regarding the methodology in computation of project costs. We were preparing the Higgins Lake computation of costs. Prine and Newhoff, Spicer, Chase Shepkey, the attorney, Chair Censor, and Commissioner Morley all took place in that discussion, using the same method and process that was used for St. Helen and Holton Lake. Creating a constant contact list for communications. Our Controller Administrator Jody Valentino signed up the county. Commissioner Censor has been doing the updates. August, Higgins Lake SAD, oral arguments were heard by the Court of Appeals on August 6th. We are now waiting a decision. Public information meeting was held at 6:00 p.m. at the Ross Common High School Auditorium. Looked at some of the comments and questions that were made during the public informational meeting and reviewed on August 7th. On August 7th, the permit was approved by Eagle, and placement of the riprap was scheduled to happen within the next seven days. Emails went out to the township regarding their tentative assessments. And the Controller Administrator helped Commissioner Morley and Censor gather information needed to make sure the informational meetings and the assessment role are as accurate as possible. On August 11th, riprap was placed. Those are the photos, thanks to Chase, that we have showing. Discussion regarding the Ross Common County Treasurer's Office taking over additional duties happened today. The SAD role maintenance and payments. This would help ensure that everything gets updated, parcel splits, combination, field questions regarding payoffs. In summary, had the lawsuits caused delays, resources, time, and money that could have been used towards other county needs or to pay for certain stages of the studies and permits. Maintaining a legal level with no fluctuation is impossible. It's not true that this board is not trying. We've also heard that the Board of Commissioners has not taken any action. We've also heard that there may be action, but no results. This board has been committed to moving forward at maintaining the legal level, and it may not be at the speed any of us like. The permit was finally approved Thursday, August 7th, and the riprap was placed on Monday, August 11th. Next steps. Continue to examine questions regarding the methodology. There's an assessment uploaded to the Lake Levels website to take place on Monday, August 18th. September 2nd is an assessment hearing, 6:00 p.m. at the Ross Common High School Auditorium. A formal resolution for affirming the assessment role will take place on September 10th at the Ross Common County Board of Commissioners meeting. Assessment would be included on the winter tax bill. Future plans and steps. To have meetings with Eagle to find out what they will require to modify or replace the current structure. This way, we know exactly what will be needed before entering the pre-engineering or design phase. Hire an engineering firm to inform us of what is needed to be done for the Board of Commissioners to be able to maintain the legal level. We all know that with the way the current structure sits, we still have not been able to maintain the legal level. All gates have been closed for well over a year. Put together an advisory board to help discuss what options should be considered from the engineers, engineering firm for the structure. Develop a computation of cost to get us through the design phase. Public information meeting to help keep everyone updated along the way. And assessment number two, which would most likely be two years. Future plans and steps. The actual building of a new structure or modification. It is the Board of Commissioners feeling that based on the current information and knowledge that we have, the Higgins Lake Lake-Level Control Structure will have to be redesigned and built. Here are some of the following reasons. We're unable to maintain the legal lake level. All gates and sheeting are at the legal lake level. There's too much loss of water due to wave action, as seen in the photo. There's failing sheeting, lack of sheeting in the opening, which leads to erosion and scouring. And when placing the riprap, voids under the structure on the south side were found. Future plans. Design of an operation manual, public informational meetings, public hearings, Circuit Court, the third assessment for the construction phase, which would most likely be a four-year assessment. In hopes that all of this is completed no later than the end of 2028. That is the end of the presentation. Motions and resolutions, we currently have none. So we are at public comment. Is there any public comment? I knew there would be.
You know, there's so much, there's so much that you went over, and it's very comprehensive and very thorough. It's hard to analyze. I made a few notes. A lot of activity, and I've said this before, and you mentioned it at the end, a lot of activity, but not much results. And we shouldn't confuse activity with results. I'm going to go through this as we were going along, so some of it will be all a little bit mixed up. Several Hi-Fi gauges were taken out because the water levels on Higgins were too low. Does that tell you anything? Okay? The daily data that is supplied by Hi-Fi is not being supplied anywhere that I know of. The data is there, we're being given the information daily, but it's not being stored as the USGS does it on an average daily basis, so it's difficult to track.
Working on it.
I know, that's what I was going to say. You said you were working on that, and I just wanted to mention that. Good job. There's a lot, there's a lot. I'm not going to pick at everything that's said, because everything that you said was accurate, but it's not the whole truth either. There are some things that were missing and left out. One of the things that was omitted in the presentation that the Board of Commissioners, this is what brought on the lawsuit, the Board of Commissioners filed a resolution in 2019 that said you wouldn't do any, not this board, two people on this board were here, that said you would not do anything unless two-thirds of the people on Higgins Lake supplied petitions and paid $10,000.
Who was in there?
And that's what brought on the lawsuit. I must have been writing notes when that said. That's what actually brought on the lawsuit. Okay? And that's what the Court of Appeals said that the Board of Commissioners had a duty to do. So it wasn't, there's, I think my admonition to put off the SAD on Higgins until the lawsuits were well over regarding the establishment of the SAD were prophetic. Look at the problems that have been caused because of that. A lot of money has been spent, over $200,000, I believe, has been spent on the SAD developments on Higgins, as opposed to we could have spent a lot smaller amount of money on improvements on the existing dam that would have helped maintain the legal levels. I see that the recommendations by Spicer were made in your PowerPoint presentation, and that was good. And I'm wondering why additional permits haven't been filed with Eagle for the recommendations made by Spicer. I remember that the initial permits were filed and when they were denied, but why no follow-up? And why hasn't Eagle been taken to court? Why hasn't this commission taken Eagle to court? You're responsible for maintaining the levels, but you haven't followed through and taken Eagle to court. They've been running you guys around in circles. We all know, we've talked about it. When I was a commissioner, we talked about it. You get one thing done, and then they change the goalpost, and then you get that done, they change the goalpost again. And you forgot to mention that on May 7th, 2024, the court reaffirmed, I don't believe it was in there, that this commission had a duty to maintain the water levels on Higgins Lake. I think that was omitted. Yet the recommendations made by Spicer have been forgotten. Only one permit has been requested. That wasn't even in the Spicer recommendations, and that was to replace the riprap, and that's good. Hopefully, that's going to help a little bit. One permit in two years. And like I mentioned before, the deal, the Board of Commissioners needs to become more proactive. proactive. As I mentioned in my previous comments and mentioned, and as mentioned by Chairwoman Censor's comments, to us, we're all in this together. If we're all in this together, let's work together. Instead of isolating us and saying, you're not going to talk to us because of lawsuits, we should be working together, brainstorming, figuring out a way to get the repairs done more quickly. It's going to take years to get a new LLCs if we, even if we do get one. Years. Between now and then, what are we going to do? Nothing. Okay? So you need to start, start working with us, not blaming us, which is what you seem to be doing, blaming us for the lawsuits because the job isn't getting done. That's the way to get things done. We got to work together. Okay? The gates may be closed, but that isn't the issue. The issue is the uncontrolled 4.75-foot spillway. Between the time a new project is defined and an SAD is developed for that, temporary repairs need to be requested by Eagle. I'm hoping to hear shortly that you're going to be doing that. That's why this has been going on for years and years and years. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comment? Come on up, state your name.
Craig Cotterman, Houghton Lake. Very nice presentation, mostly all about Houghton Lake. We have a special assessment district as well that you created for Houghton Lake. And when you created that special assessment district, you said that you would be maintaining the legal, normal lake level for Houghton Lake. Of course, Mythbusters or misinformation, you've since then raised the lake level of Houghton Lake. You raised the lake level and you called it an operations manual. Raised a lake level four tenths of an inch, banking water, something, you've been banking water now at Houghton Lake for over 30 years. It's never been about a legal lake level. Always been about banking water, having more water for the boaters. And by chance, if we have a drought, you'll have a legal lake level. Basically, that's what the operations manual was, that if we bank water now, this four tenths of an inch, 4.8 inches, we bank this water now, if we have a drought, you'll have more water. Of course, when we have a flood, like we did this spring, I have a picture I showed you earlier, widespread flooding around Houghton Lake. People like you didn't said nothing about it, but you went ahead and raised the lake level. Called it an operations manual. This is pretty important for everybody here to realize that once they have a special assessment district, they'll use wording in there to raise the lake level. And when you attack them in circuit court, they're going to use your special assessment money to raise the lake level. And if you guys get away with this, you'll be doing it on other lakes. You'll be able to do it on Higgins Lake. You've already raised St. Helen Lake, 1998, I think it was. We have a flooding problem at Houghton Lake. The lake's so big, we have a Sasech effect, which means wind blowing tides can raise the lake level in front of my house eight inches or more. I get flooded, and people like you don't even care. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Come on up.
I'd just like to say, after watching all that baloney up there, if the government actually went out and did something and got it done, it wouldn't cost us so much. You know, this reminded me of the movie, The Best Little Whorehouse in Texas, where the governor's dancing around and making everybody look in different direction and nothing gets done. He just pulling the wool over everybody's eyes. And I just think the state should be involved in this. The governor, the Attorney General, I saw something mentioned about the Attorney General, but this is still BS in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Word comment. Commissioner Morley.
I will, I've taken some notes from everybody's comments, and I think when we maybe do part two, or as we continue maybe putting this information at our lake level meetings, if we need to do it separate or as a whole, I think that we can go back and address some of these questions, and maybe they were misinterpreted or misunderstood, and we'll come back. The ones that I have right now is that we didn't tell the whole truth, that we omitted the resolution in 2019. So I think that was in there. But, well, we'll go back and double check, make sure we, if you saw it or if you didn't. And then also to put off the decisions until, excuse me, can I, can I? Yeah. Put off the decisions until chill, that conversation was about, we put them off until chill was done, because we can, those meeting notes clearly state that we were, previous boards were asked to, don't do anything yet, let the lawsuits take their course. Well, that's been going on for a long time, too. So I'm not sure how much progress can be made if we continue to do lawsuits only instead of taking our own action. The other one that we want to address, too, is why were the additional permits not filed? So maybe we can come back on that one. Mr. Cotterman's question's really about that we've raised the level because of the operations manual. I think we have some data that shows that we're not really raising, but don't know because I don't handle Houghton Lake. But we'll bring back that to the, to group as well. And that, that banking question, which I think went through in that court hearing, that was pretty well outlined and dismissed, but I think let's come back and make sure that at one of our next meetings, we hit on each of those and come back and talk to people about those. That's my take.
Commissioner Melburn.
I said this at 11 o'clock, and I think it bears repeating since Eric brought some of the same comments up. This collectively and individually is the best board I've had, a pleasure to work on for over 20 years, so I can speak with some credibility. The reason why I voted no, though, today for the approval of the agenda, because I believe the, the meeting should have been called the Lake Level Budget, I'm sorry, Lake Level Background Information Presentation, not Mythbusters. I don't think we busted any myths today, but I think Charlene, Charlene Censor did an exceptional job, and I applaud her for her efforts. Thank you.
Commissioner Russo.
I have to just agree with Mark. Maybe our next meeting will just put a new lake level right at the 11 o'clock meeting versus a separate meeting at 1:00.
Thank you, sir.
That's it, thank you.
Commissioner Wolfson.
I appreciate all this information being compiled because sometimes memory fails us, what went on over the years, and we can refer back to it. I mean, not just us, but even the public fails to see some points that were made, and this will help in that respect. I would like in our plan moving forward for the board to come up with an estimate, the worst-case scenario of what something's going to cost for Higgins Lake. We can do that and state it as, this is our best guess, worst-case scenario at today's prices. That way, people will have an understanding, there's an end to it. I mean, they can see the end of the assessment that way. And I'd like us to, as a board, put that number together and present it to the public.
I would have to agree with Commissioner Wolfson. I think as a board, we really need to look at the next steps, the costs, and give a little bit more detail out to the public so that they do understand what the end game is, what our goals are. I think there's not one person sitting up here that doesn't agree that the goal is to maintain that legal level. And whatever that looks like or however we get there is what needs to be our focus, is how are we going to get there? And what does that look like? And have those conversations and communicate that out to the public.
Madam Chair, I would 100% agree. And as we form, reform the Higgins Lake Advisory Board, we have those conversations, and I think I've mentioned this before we started going down this path when I came on, that it is also imperative, even if you represent an area that's not Higgins Lake, we know this is a very big topic, that we take our time when we go to the township meetings, or if we have coffee hours, or whatever you're doing in your areas, that that information also goes there, not just when we come to these meetings. Because some people can't come, and they can view them on our YouTube channel, but it would be nice for us to have that conversation more frequently and not just at these meetings as a group, you know, so.
Yes.
Yeah. And I have one last one, sorry. And I know I probably have some people who will disagree with this, but I truly believe that if we want to come to the table and we want to work together, you can't be in the middle of a lawsuit. That just does not work to come to the middle. And I am more than welcome to have people serve on that advisory board that aren't on that position and try to work and look at all the options coming together. That's my take. Thanks.
Any other comments?
I have to agree with Commissioner Morley. The lawsuits have been encumbering, and they're not getting us to the end goal. It's, even Eric says, we need to work together. Eric, we need to work together. That comes from both sides.
We're going to be in lawsuits. That's just the way it goes. Lawsuits are supposed to be.
With no further comment, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
You are. Thank you, Arminian, for being here. Thanks.